Randy's going underneath the thing.
What time you go down and stand?
You see the flag?
Who's got the small child?
We're ready whenever you are.
Um, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please rise and recite the pledge of allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Welcome, welcome everyone. At this time, we have a moment for public comment. Do we have anyone present that would like to have a public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on. The agenda, has everyone had a chance to look over the agenda? Do we have any amendments for that? additions, corrections to today's agenda?
I'm sure I move the agenda as printed.
Alright, we have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
A second then?
Discussion about that. Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we'll take a look at our minutes from our last meeting. Have a chance to peruse the previous minutes.
Adam Chair, I move the minutes from September 7th.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Discussion. Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes have been approved. Alright. Well, at this time, we have a guest to make a presentation. Eric?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you all for giving me some of your time today. I'm today with several individuals who will interview shortly. The purpose of this meeting today or my presence here today is to have a check-in with the Meeker County Board. I don't want a relationship with the Meeker County Board that is such that I only show up when I want something. Today, I don't want anything. And I wanted to make sure that you're aware of what we have going on at the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission and make myself available to you and my staff available to you as well. I do have folders that I provided to you. So with me today, I have several people, as you can see. For starters, I have our financial expert Sue Kimsey, who has a wealth of institutional knowledge from the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission. She is our most experienced professional with the MMDC. And I would be frankly lost without her. I also have Justice Walker, who is young but definitely punches well above his weight. Terry Smith is a real goat getter. And I have Michelle Morowski, economic developer, who was really just thrown right into it and continues to impress. Also on our MMDC staff, we have transportation focused planner Kyle Tenable. We have our new economic developer who started just last week, Nate Royce. Nate joins Michelle in our economic development department. And we have communication specialist Ben Carlson. I want to take a moment to thank Commissioner Schmidt for his participation on the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission. Steve is, he is a joy to have on the commission, to be honest with you. He is a voice of reason. He asks good questions. So there's never a gimme with Commissioner Schmidt.
It's the same guy we're talking about. I need to go.
I checked.
Yeah.
I checked with him before.
This is coordinated.
I did not get that.
Well, you do have a flag on your lapel today, so it is a little rare.
You want to know the true story? I had a flag on on that one. Then it was turned from the upside down and I said, no, you got to take it. So they blocked it out. True story.
Very good.
Commissioner Schmidt always attends our meetings. When he's unable to attend, he checks in and just to make sure that he's well aware of what's going on. If he has questions, he brings them to us. If he's working with or is aware of a business who could benefit from our economic development assistance, he brings us that too. So he is definitely a commissioner that I certainly I value all commissioners on our board. But certainly, I think that Commissioner Schmidt would have real potential and would do very well in one of our leadership positions on the executive team, should he have capacity for that in the future. So we do have some positions opening up next July. And so it's something that I would love him to think about. But I understand that.
It's a little poor traveling.
What I also understand is his time is not unlimited. So.
He was actually selling something then. Just to you.
So we've had some big changes at the MMDC over the last eighteen months. Some of the more obvious ones to the public are we have a new location on the Midwest Technology Campus. You may or may not know that the MMDC was housed in the basement of the Willmer City offices for decades. And so we moved last August of 2020. Of course, during the pandemic, we moved from the basement to the third floor of the Midwest Technology Campus. It's the former administrative building for the state hospital. So we went from the basement to the third floor. We had no sleep for about a week. Other than that, it's been a smooth transition. We have a new website. We have a new logo. So those are, you know, I don't want to say window dressing, but of course, they're not the most important changes. Our more important changes include, first of all, we have new staff. Six of our eight staff have been onboarded in the last eighteen months, myself included. In September of 2021, we now have eight individuals on staff. That's where we're planning to stay for the foreseeable future. I don't see us going up or down in size at all. We did use our CARES Act funds to increase the size of our economic development team. Some of you may be familiar with former MMDC employee Les Nelson, who was our economic development director. He retired at the end of June. He was our sole economic development person for our four county region. And that was insufficient. So with the CARES Act funds, we temporarily went to three individuals and with the understanding that we knew Les was going to be retiring. And so now we're at two where we want to stay. Again, more importantly, we have a new commitment to quality. We don't want our cities or our other stakeholders to receive cookie cutter plans. I don't want copy and paste to be part of our normal routine. So we want more stakeholder engagement. We want greater focus on delivering a good return on the public's investment. This is a snapshot of our budget for fiscal year 2021. You'll see that about a third of our funds come from the federal EDA. And we have 157 and change that come from other federal sources. We do have a local tax levy that provides roughly a third of our funding. And then we have some state and some local projects that we do on contract basis. Our budget for fiscal year 2021 was just under $1 million. So with regard to the levy, I want to give you an idea of how that levy serves our region. First of all, and probably most importantly, the levy is used to provide leverage to gain other funds for our region. So in fiscal year 2021, you'll see that $70,000 was leveraged to receive an additional $70,000 in EDA planning funds. Those planning funds support our economic development work. And that can include anything from assisting businesses to working on some broader underlying issues such as workforce, broadband, childcare, housing, those types of things. $13,235 was leveraged to receive $75,000 from the MinDOT transportation, or from MinDOT for transportation planning funds. So those funds are used to support planning with regard to anything from safe routes to schools projects, to active living plans, to determining which construction projects have a higher priority. Of course, that's with a larger group, but we do participate in those types of activities. And then another $19,500 was leveraged to receive $175,500 from MinDOT for Rural Transportation Coordinating Council funds. And those funds are geared toward, and Terry will speak to that a little later, but those funds are there to make sure we're helping people get the rides they need, especially non-drivers, so that they can remain in their communities and live in their homes and avoid, for as long as possible, moving to congregated care facilities. Our levy also helps to support operations at the MMDC. It helps us mitigate those increasing costs, including health insurance and other things. And it helps us keep our technical assistance rates low for our regional stakeholders. We often enter into contracts with, for instance, it could be cities, counties, townships, things like ordinance projects or comprehensive planning projects. Because we have the levy, we're able to really give good value to those stakeholders. We do contribute a lot of our time without any fee, but when it gets to the point of having a contract, typically, first of all, our hourly rates are far lower than a private firm. And then we're able to subsidize a little further because we have the ability to tap into that levy. So when we're serving a small town such as Watkins or such as Play-Doh, or if we're giving some free consultation to Cedar Mills, we're able to do that because we have those levy funds. At this point, I'd love economic developer Michelle Morowski to join me and talk to our economic development efforts a little bit.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you for having us today, commissioners. And MMDC Economic Development, as you can see, there's a whole list of things that we do. A couple that I can really point out in the Meeker County area. First of all, childcare. I also sit on the Meeker County RCC IP Rural Childcare Innovation Program. This is an initiative, excuse me, an initiative through First Children's Finance. And what it is, is a group of people that come together and try to find solutions to childcare. And some of those solutions can be very creative, some can be more traditional, but we all work together to help find solutions to that concern. And of course, childcare affects, you know, workforce. It affects so many different things. I also thank you to Commissioner Schmidt again. As a commissioner, he reached out to our organization with a potential business that would like to grow in Meeker County. And so we've been having discussions with them as well and connecting them with the right people. A lot of what we do in economic development is resources. So I always say I don't have to know everything. I just need to know who knows everything about everything. So I do a lot of connecting people with the right people to make good decisions. One of the most important focuses that we have is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. That is a nice big mouthful. It is, we just called our SUDs. We just love to come up with a better name, you know, if anyone has one, you know, maybe there's a coffee gift card in there for you. So I'll take care of that, Eric. So it's a strategy-driven plan. One way to look at it is it's a roadmap. You may recall that in August, we had some SUDs meetings and we had one here at the courthouse. I had some good attendance, great conversations, great discussions. And it's the roadmap for the next five years. Where do we want the region to go? In August, as I mentioned, we had one community input meeting here. We also had one in each county, McLeod, Renville, and Candy Ojai County. And we talked about what do we want to do in the future? What does our next five years look like? We just went through a basic SWOT analysis. There will be a survey coming out that has the same questions. So all of you will have the opportunity, if you didn't make one of, make that meeting or make one of the meetings, that you can provide input as well. The big thing, the key thing with the SUDs is that not only, if we didn't have this, not only would it be MMDC not be able to apply for funds through the federal EDA, but our stakeholders could also not apply for US EDA funds. So it's really important that we have this. The timeline right now is getting that survey out and then we'll start writing in October. Start writing the entire narrative for the document. And then we will have it out for public comment, I think November, December. Fine tune it. And then January 31st is when it's due. So our, my hope is to have it out, have it submitted by mid-January. At least give us a couple of weeks breathing room there. Anything else you would like to add about the SUDs, I think?
Just when you, when you do receive the survey, please forward it to your networks. We want to make sure we have as much input on the, on the five-year plan as possible. And as Michelle said, this really is the gateway to the Economic Development Administration. Our designation, our four county designation as an Economic Development District is contingent upon approval of this Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy.
Alright, so the CARES Act. Sorry, I just went ahead. So the CARES Act grant, that is actually the grant that I was hired under last September. September 28th was my start date. So we're coming up on a year. Drinking from a fire hose is really one way to put it, but it has been a great experience. And we were, it was actually non-competitive. We were invited to apply for it because of our status being in good standing, meaning we had a SUDs. And there are actually several of the economic development organizations throughout the state that also have planners that came through with the CARES Act. So I continue, even though my role has shifted a little bit with retirement of Les, I still join them every month that we meet and we talk about things going on. You know, we're all working on our SUDs. We're all working on economic development projects. So it's a great way to just get new ideas and see what others are doing as well. The goal of the grant was to, was to increase the economic resilience, regional economic resilience. And that's really the word that sticks in my mind all the time is resilience. Everything I do, how does this help make a community or a region or a county or even just a business at that level, how does it help make them resilient? So we do a lot of activities in that regard. We, as, we connect regional businesses to economic relief financing and resources. We have two revolving loan funds. They are both fully committed at this time. So we do have the money on the streets and they are working with businesses out there. And we also provide grant writing, other technical assistance. Just last night, I was working on writing a grant for a community. And we just work as a team with that. So nothing I do is ever set in stone. I always pass it, Eric loves to edit. So, so we send it over to him and, you know, set it with the team we're working on, we're working with. Other activities, of course, SUDs development. And we've also helped when we had the CARES Act dollars that came through with the counties and grants were being made to businesses, we did some work with the counties to help vet those applications. I did some filings even. It was just, it's within the purview of that grant. And working toward those solutions for underlying barriers to economic success, like childcare, broadband, workforce, housing, I also sit on some housing committees and try to solve those things. And, you know, there are things that have been issues for a very long time, but we just keep at them.
I think one thing that's important to note is that we have very good working relationships with people like Lisa Graffington over at the Meeker EDC and also with Southwest Initiative Foundation and our other regional partners. We, we tend not to compete. We tend to collaborate with those individuals and those organizations. So that's, that's very important to know. Also, if there is a business that is working with Michelle, they will never be charged for her services. Or if they're working with Nate, there is no charge to the business. We heard who helped them because as we help them, we help our communities. Next, I'd love our community planner, Justice Walker, to jump up and give us an idea, an overview of some of our community development type activities.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So my name is Justice Walker, the community planner for the Minnesota Development Commission. I handle everything from traditional planning services like comp plans, zoning ordinances, zoning inquiries, I think, issues with steel roofs, color of buildings, color of houses, all the arbitrary things. I think another big one that's come up a lot recently is fences. What can be a fence, what isn't a fence, how tall fences should be? Why is my neighbor's fence too close to my house? So I deal with a lot of that. And then I get to do a lot of non-traditional planning things as well. And I think that's kind of where the fun exists for me. So back on the screen with the Min gravel 160, this has been an adventure bikepacking event that's, I think, in the future will be used as as non-traditional economic development, really trying to spread tourism and kind of tap into venture cycling and the use of gravel roads to see more scenic things. We had people from as far away as St. Paul's. We had like a lot of local people from Pennsberg come down. We had someone cater it. We had a performer from Ortonville come out. It was a really big hit. And we're already looking forward to doing it next year. I think we're going to have a recap meeting next week. And we're giving out patches to everyone, I guess, who participated in the planning, people who finished the race, just because I ended up getting a ton of patches made. So that's nice. And then the other thing, so, was developing a local supply chain for halal certified goat meat. So in Willmer, we have a substantial Somali population. And right now, yeah, there's a really big strain on halal meat. And so I didn't know this, but all the halal meat in the state of Minnesota comes from Australia, six months frozen. And we have goat farmers and we have stores. It doesn't, doesn't really make sense that it's not grown here or sourced here. And so me personally, I'm into a lot of local food. And so I was talking to someone I actually bought goat from, for myself. And I was like, oh, whoa, like, is there anything I can help you with? And she mentioned that she had a halal meat deal that fell through. And I was like, oh, I wonder like if we can kind of help out with that. So fast forward about a year, we got an idea brief through the U of M. And now we're administering a grant through the U of M to run a pilot program to see what people will pay for local halal meat. And we would have had goat in the stores last week, but Butcher is busy with harvest right now. And so I think next week is going to be the actual launch day that we'll be able to get goats into the stores. And I think right now, we're already up to 16 goats a week on order. And so we're going to be seeing what people are going to be paying for it. And we're actually going to record that. And then I think at the end of it, we're going to put out a report of what people spent. Like, I guess our process, we're working with a halal consultant that he's worked on international projects. And so that, and we were trying to be completely transparent. That way, this can be a process that's going to be duplicated and removed from the black box of, okay, well, my meat comes from Australia. But like, it's grown here, it's butchered here. And so I think that's going to be something that's going to be very, very rewarding. It's something that's had a lot of traction. It is already, like, we have, like, I've had several stores like reach out to me about, like, can it participate? And we're capped at four. But yeah, so these, so from the comp plans to the ordinance projects to working on localizing halal meat, I feel like there isn't much I can't work on. I think that's probably like the beauty of working at a regional level. So many things are going on and so many things are kind of within my scope that I don't really have a more clear work. And I think like from like, I guess, like from a Meeker County perspective. So I'm finishing up the Watkins, City Watkins ordinance project. I think I just got to like add some things. I had a meeting there last week. And I think, oh, yeah, I've been working, I've been working with Kevin a lot, like those officials, to kind of make sure that we have like some of the things like together for some of the things that they've been asking for, for a lot of like the bike changes and things like that. But yeah, like, I guess, I think community development has been, I think, very rewarding for me. And I think it's also been a really good opportunity for me to like more, like, learn more about the community and actually be involved and meet people face to face and kind of see like what's going on in the community. And actually show people that we are here to serve and actually make a difference, I think. And not just in like things like the quality of life concerns, like from the halal situation, but also the quality of life from just like ordinances and like mitigating concerns regarding things like fences and colors in buildings.
Yeah. Just to give you an idea, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, Justice is currently involved with about four different ordinance projects and two comprehensive plans. So that's on top of some of the more non-traditional things like the Min gravel 160 and the halal certified meat. If there's anything that kind of falls into a miscellaneous bucket, he's usually the person that, or one of the people that I talk to first. So thank you very much, Justice. MMDC is also, of course, heavily involved with transportation planning. As I mentioned before, there's a list of things in your packet that we can be involved with. That's not an all-inclusive list. If you have a transportation related question as far as, not so much rides, but as far as where should this sidewalk go? Or, or, you know, if it's related to the infrastructure, that's Kyle Tenable's department. And I would definitely encourage you to reach out. If you have anything to do with him, of course, it's a good discussion. Kyle is also leading our local human service public transportation coordination plan. Along with Justice and Terry Smith and myself, we're all involved in this plan to some extent. This is something that, it's a separate contract with MinDOT. It's required to be done every five years for a state that receives 5310 funds. And so we are heading that up in this region. It started in late July. And the plan will be wrapped up by halal meat and then sent in for approval. At this point, just to wrap things up a little bit, I'd love Terry Smith to join me. And he can give you an update on the Regional Transportation Coordinating Council grant.
Good morning, commissioners.
Terry Smith. I started with the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission first of the year as Transportation Resource Coordinator. Here to talk to you about, as you see in the slides there, the Minnesota Department of Transportation and Human Services in collaboration with other state agencies are creating these regional transportation coordinating councils around greater Minnesota. They're known as the RTCC. In our region, this is known as the Mid-Minnesota RTCC. As you can see, get the other slide back. You can see the public and private transportation pictures here in Meeker County. CCT is part of that system. And that's central community transit, the public transportation provider. And then you can also see some pictures of private, which is the CARECAD picture, the non-emergency medical transportation providers. One of the things that our MMRTCC is working with is to improve the coordination among these transportation providers. Service agents of the private sector to achieve three outcomes. Identify and reduce transportation gaps, streamline access to transportation, and provide more transportation options. And so if you think back to those pictures, is getting more of those, filling in the shortage of maybe medical transportation providers or finding, filling in some of the gaps with the public transportation providers. We do that by having conversations with stakeholders through an advisory council that meets monthly. And we work with ideas and solutions to fill some of those gaps. Part of that is increasing the provider engagements, getting transportation providers involved, getting their input, learning about what we can do by assisting providers. One of the things that we've been doing is working with our communications director at MMDC to produce some videos. And if you go on to the cctbus.org, you'll see one of our videos is now featured on their website. Instructing consumers how the ease of booking a ride through CCT. So there again, that's a great example of how we're making an effort to spread the word and get the best usage out of our public transportation in this region. Also providing transportation guidance and consultation, maintaining a resource guide that we share with Meeker County's human service representatives for them to pass along to people to have a list and directory for all of these services that are in our region. So that they can easily tap into either Medicare, Medicaid rides, or any type of waiver transportation. We also support the volunteer driving programs, volunteer driver programs in, are a part of CCT in Meeker County. And so they control how the volunteer drivers are set up with those in need for seniors or people with disability. And so simple phone calls to central community transit could help volunteer drivers of people or volunteers using their own vehicles to provide some of these trips to medical appointments, whether it's in the cities or, or St. Cloud or just across town. These also can be used for things like bringing seniors or disabled people to the airport or things like that. And so getting those words out, getting that word out and even working with service clubs to help support some of these volunteer-run programs. The other thing that we're doing is exploring in our Phase Four part of the grant that we are in is exploring vehicle sharing opportunities with our region, whether that's a private organization or something that has vehicles. How can we optimize their use of their vehicles by sharing with others that may need and how that might work? There are other services out there that we're exploring as well, like car sharing services. I believe there's one called Our Car, uh, where you can, uh, rent, uh, check out a car for an hour and return it. So, certainly looking at all those types of things to fulfill those, uh, transportation gaps. I'm also, as Eric said, working with the Five-Year Local Human Service, uh, Coordination Plan, uh, in which we will be surveying, uh, consumers on the public, uh, CCT, uh, buses as well as other areas, uh, working with stakeholders to find these improvements. And we've already just begun that process. There are finding, uh, a bunch of great things, uh, that can come out and help us, uh, here in the future. So, um, yeah. Uh, oh, yeah. And then, the, yeah, the last thing would be, uh, part of our, our Phase Four is working with emergency management, taking inventory, uh, working, I just was on the phone with Emergency Manager, Director Stephanie Johnson, in inventorying, uh, what kind of vehicles are out there to help in the case of, uh, an evacuation? If they were wheelchair-accessible, uh, vehicles that could be used, you know, for multiple evacuation, those types of things. So, um, that's a, a great project. And, and Stephanie was more than willing to help and collaborate in how we could, um, assist with those types of things. So...
Terry is definitely doing the work with about four people. So, I'm gonna say, I appreciate his willingness to just jump in and, uh, and swim. So, um, at this point, um, I don't have any more for you today, but I would be happy to take any questions that you might have about the Mid-Minnesota Development Commission or any of our programs.
I've got a, a comment or two for you, uh, just for the board here. We got some members of the board here. Eric lives in Litchfield and he worked over at, uh, Central Minnesota Job and Training and Family Services Building before accepting this executive director position. And I believe that was May of the...
March of twenty-twenty, two days before the executive order that shut us down.
But he jumped right into the fire and, uh, and has been replaced a long time on Winkler. Uh, I think he had thirty-two years of, and of the members here. And Sue, you've been here the longest by any, by far of anybody on, uh, on the panel here today. So, there's been a lot of changes and I think you managed through that quite well. And, you know, a lot of obstacles thrown at you right, right out the gate too. So, I appreciate the work you guys in the direction that you're all heading there. Just appreciate you coming. Uh...
Yeah, I look forward to working on that project. Right now, that, what's, I think, there's good interest there anyway. I'll see if we'll be able to accommodate those there to help out too. So...
I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Smith. And, uh, we have had very good support from our Board of Commissioners. That made all the difference. Um, and they, they asked good questions. Um, so, it's, it's not like they're writing a blank check or anything on that order. But, uh, I, I think that everyone is on the same page, uh, with regard to the fact that the MMDC needed to move forward. It needed to do more. It couldn't stay, um, literally or metaphorically in the basement any longer. So, um, I think we're, we're making some strides and we'll continue to do so. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming.
There's a lot of them, that's for sure. I don't think so.
Good morning. Phil Schwalz, Public Works Director. One item for you this morning. Uh, an agreement with Litchfield Township for the replacement of a bridge. The bridge serves as the outlet of, um, Lake Ripley. It's right on the line between the township and the city. Technically, it's outside city limits. Um, city limits would be what I'd call northeast of the bridge. Southwest would be township. So, the township owns just that little leg of road that goes out to one. And it includes the bridge. So, bridge replacement. Meeker County manages the Township Bridge System. That means we take care of their seasonal inspections. Um, we handle replacements. There is funding available through the state. This is part of the Minnesota Users Tax, the gas tax that goes into a Township Bridge Fund. On the way, usually shakes out, the first ten thousand dollars of engineering and the first ten thousand dollars of, um, non-precipitating costs. So, maybe grading with the construction would have to be paid by the township. The remaining bridge replacement costs are paid through this gas tax fund, basically. A bridge like this is probably gonna be around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, it helps the township out quite a bit. The agreement is necessary to access those state funds, basically. So, as I said, it serves the outlet of Lake Ripley. Um, the city of Litchfield has vested interest in the structure. Even though it's not within the city of Litchfield, it's a township structure. The city has agreed to pay the local match. So, this shouldn't cost Litchfield Township anything. The city will pick up the match. It's not covered by the gas tax. So, request approving Bridge L eight-three-seven-zero replacement agreement with Litchfield Township.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the bridge, uh, replacement agreement with Litchfield Township, L eight-three-seven-zero.
I'll second Madam Chair.
We have a motion. It has been seconded. Is there any discussion? You've been in conversation with Litchfield Township.
Yep, yep. And they've signed the agreement. They went to their meeting maybe a month, month and a half ago.
Okay.
We discussed it.
But this is along that little stretch where they took out all the trees and sort of redid the ditch.
Yep.
It's north of Park there.
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion for Phil? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Um, no, we're on Social Services and I'll be taking these items.
Okay.
Yes. Uh, so, the first item we have today is a request for approve the recruitment of a full-time child service, child support lead worker. Uh, this is a new position. It's to replace the current, uh, supervisor position. The incumbent there is going to be retiring. And this is a, a minor reorganization within the department, moving the relatively small child support group under the financial team. Uh, the lead worker will support the enforcement aides and collection officers, providing direction but not supervision. Uh, the position is funded via state and federal sources. And the change will save the county approximately twenty-two thousand dollars per year. With that, um, available for any questions.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, recruitment of full-time child support lead worker.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Any further questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, the second is an amendment to the, um, SNAP Joint Powers Board Agreement that we have with six other counties. Uh, to have Sherburne County act as the fiscal host for employment and training dollars. Between the six counties, there's about twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. So, it's a relatively small pot of money. Uh, as I'm sure you recall, back on March second, the, the board adopted the current joint powers agreement. Since then, Assanti County has exhibited a desire to enter into the JPA and have Sherburne County manage their funds as well. Uh, the, um, social service directors are, you know, have agreed that that's a, a positive thing for the group and there'll be no negative impact. And therefore, the rec, uh, the amendment is recommended for approval.
Madam Chair, I'd move to approve the SNAP Joint Powers Board Agreement. I'm done with them.
All right. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion. It has been seconded. Do we have any discussion? Any questions about the motion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And the last item is just the payables.
Madam Chair, move to approve Social Services Accounts Payables.
All right. And do I hear a second?
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
Are there any questions about the payables?
Pretty, pretty simplistic or straightforward.
Andrew answered mine yesterday, so...
Okay. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Morning. Barb, County Auditor. Just a couple of things. We'll start out with the Bonfire Bar and Grill in the south part of, uh, South Litchfield, twenty-two, has, the old building has been purchased and there's a new owner going through the process. So, the first process is to set a public hearing for the off-sale, which is required by statute. And, uh, prior to this meeting, I looked into the times and dates, asking for that to be October nineteenth at nine a.m. here at the county boardroom.
Move to set the public hearing for October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-one at nine a.m. in the county boardroom to consider the application of off-sale intoxicating liquor license for Shaggy's Bonfire LLC.
Do we have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Madam Chair, I second that motion.
Second? Is there any discussion? How will something like this affect our local liquor store?
It has to be by, um, statute, more than one mile of a most direct route in the, from a municipal. So, it qualifies to be a off-sale.
So, it can't be within that one...
Sure mile radius of... Right. One mile, mile by most direct route. And they certainly qualify, I think, their three or four miles of it because what they did not put on their application.
And Barb, you indicated they've had this in the past under a different owner.
Correct. Maybe I should give just a little update on it. Um, I'm maintaining coming to you with both the application for off-sale and on-sale for Shaggy's. Shaggy's, right. Get confused with the different S's here. So, they have to, um, pass a, an inspection from the alcohol gambling enforcement. They also need to be reinstated with their restaurant license. And there is some things going on right now with remodel. I talked to him the other day. He said, we're on dumpster number three with remodel. It's, and we also had to go before the township. So, the Township of Ellsworth has, um, acknowledged that there has been an establishment there and that they're continuing to support that. So, when it comes to the county board, these applications will come in October. But as part of the statute, which I phoned and Commissioner Johnson and I were going back and forth, um, once it's been established in its routine that that was what, what could be considered grandfathered in, they still are required to have this public hearing. So, we need to have the public hearing on the off-sale portion. The on-sale will be recommended. I'm observing by the county board. And then, final approval is done by the alcohol gambling after they meet those criteria that I just discussed. All of these applications also are vetted by our county sheriff and county attorney with regard to the licensees and the, um, partners. And that has been done already. So, we're ready for setting the public hearing and moving forward. They do have to provide their insurance, but that's a little bit of a revolving because until we have these in place, the insurance doesn't go in place and vice versa. So, it's all going to come to you, uh, in October for that approval.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next item will be aggregate material discussion. And Phil will help me if I get stuck on any part of this, along with our committee. So, the first item before you is an application that we received from, um, Orville Anderson. Orville is looking at some aggregate special revenue fund dollars for a proposed project that he was likely going to push back spoils and regrade an existing mine depleted, uh, or so-called depleted gravel pit. Um, Orville purchased this property in July of two thousand nineteen. Meeker County zoning ordinance has provisions on change of ownership. As, um, he did purchase this with an interim use permit. That interim use permit, however, had expired in May of nineteen. And Orville chose not to redo that in his, um, purchase. And the previous owner had not remoted as well prior to sale, primarily because of the nature of the depleted gravel pit. So, in a purchase of an interim use permit, or when you purchase a product that has an interim use permit, regardless if it's expired or not, there's a one-year condition which was listed in there as, um, permit number thirteen-one-four-four-oh, number eight. That within one year after the operation ceases and the permit expires, the applicant must have the site completely rehabhabitated according to the regulation plan. Mr. Anderson had not requested a renewal or, or a new permit. So, the aggregate committee met on September ninth to consider this application for funding. The recommendation of the committee is to deny the request. Mr. Anderson assumed the responsibilities of the interim use permit when purchasing the property. The property currently does not meet all of the Meeker County zoning ordinance requirements as outlined above, which were primarily, uh, a new owner purchase that takes responsibility. And second, there was still the one year when he purchased the property of the, uh, condition that was in place. So, at this point, I ask that you, uh, that the recommendation be granted from the committee and move to deny this application.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to deny application submitted by Orville Anderson, denying from the aggregate special tax reserve fund.
Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
Any discussion or questions? Discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor of the denial, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
The next item was, uh, for some aggregate committee updates. The aggregate committee has been in place for, um, a number of years. The, uh, reimbursements are run through and we have, uh, taken up over many opportunities to look over these particular, um, the statute and perform per the statute. We did in March of twenty-one do a reimbursement process and brought before you numerous different application forms, just as what we just used for Orville to, um, have a very specific and uniform, uh, method of, uh, looking at these particular applications. So, upon completion of the projects, we are recommending a few changes to the application process as we vetted through these and to update based on recommendations of the committee and, um, assistance from our administrator and from, um, high-range, um, engineer, public works director. So, one of the changes on the application process that was, uh, that it was that upon completion of the projects, that we have both the inspection done by the public works department and the planning and zoning office or an outsite consultant if we were to need that, based on a project that might have been a DNR or some other type of, uh, project that, um, would need experts in that way. We also would like to have the applicants spend more time giving us details on their proposed in-kind consideration. Not necessarily just saying in-kind, which could be labor, but it could also be a partner with another agency, just maybe, for example, DNR or some other item. So, we thought it would be important for the committee to be able to review those particular applications a little bit more carefully. The next item is the aggregate committee, like I said, was formed, um, when we began collecting gravel tax. However, had few responsibilities. And that was in two thousand three. At that time, we had representatives from five townships, two commissioners, the public works director and the county auditor that were in this informal committee. It's been suggested that we formalize that committee, uh, because they will be likely given more duties in terms of vetting out applications and that they also be provided per diem and mileage. As we surveyed those that attended the meeting, some were receiving mileage from their township, some were not. Some were doing part of their salary. And to be consistent with... And to be consistent with committees appointed by the county board, it would be advantageous to see them treated in the same manner. We found that the per diem and mileage reimbursement, the statute allows for up to 5% of the fee administrative fee taken from the income that we have annually. And currently, we are approved to have 3%. So we're also recommending that we change that from 3% to 5% to cover that additional cost to be able to reimburse those committee members. It's anticipated that committee will meet twice a year. Once with the renewal that we are changing in the forms and I'll go through that here shortly. Just after June 30th and then their annual meetings usually then in March along with the township meeting. Therefore, we didn't have to make a separate trip. That likely will not always fall in place. So there was a likelihood for two different meetings. So the financial impact on the front of the request for board action is that we changed from 3% to 5% in that increase. It was almost a wash when I figured out where the mileage, where they were coming from and the commissioners along with the staff was about 1,300 in both places. In reviewing the forms that were approved back in March and what we're recommending as a change, first, this is not a revenue fund, it's a reserve fund, so we're changing the title on the top of the reimbursement application. We are also adding item number six, as I discussed, to have upon completion of the project, Public Works and Planning and Zoning Office and consulting with governmental agencies if necessary, as necessary, will inspect the projects for compliance requirements of the zoning ordinance, road or other regulations because we are opening this up to the likelihood that we will have some public purpose environmental type projects that will also qualify for funding. And then Meker County will note the compliance of the project and retain the necessary documents. Another area that was changed or added is item number eight. And that will be applications for proceeds for the production tax special reserve fund. Will be accepted annually until June 30th deadline. What we're looking at there is that unlike a landowner like Orville who submits an application for his property, we believe that townships, county could potentially have a project that would meet these needs and we would group them all together and vet them out annually. Such as Phil had a project on a township road that was wearing down and put rip, riprap and things in. So we think that there might be other projects that we'll be able to look at and we would like to look at them annually rather than piecemeal them throughout the two months of the year. So that is a suggestion. We also are suggesting as long as money is available on the production special revenue fund, special reserve fund. On the findings of fact, there was just two changes. One is in vetting out the application we had. We found that the ordinance was not specific to 22.15E, however, it covered entirely 22.15 where it's recommending removing the E's. So it takes that entire zoning ordinance section. On the application itself, we are asking for more detail on the estimated total dollar of the project, the in-kind or match proposed and detail on where that funding is coming from. Especially on those projects which are county where we may use county budget funding or other purposes so that we have a full picture of what is going to happen there. That was recommended by the committee. The other changes on the form were just to change it to the reserve fund instead of the revenue fund. So if there are questions for me or Julie or Steve, sit on the committee, I'd like to also.
This just kind of cleaned it up, brought you online and let you function more smoothly as a committee, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, I guess elaborate on that. Basically formalized the committee. It was, I mean,
Formal since to
Function as a committee, but not really finalized or formalized that way. So I mean, to put the per diems and stuff in place now, it's function, just like any planning and zoning or any other committee that I sit on. It's just put in line with the rest of it.
And we do expect to have application process similar to other county advisory committees, which we will put on the webpage and let them apply. We'll encourage those that are currently on the committee to apply since they are at least three or four of them, the largest production of aggregate tax or aggregate removal. And we will try to get the word out at their annual meeting and through communication so that they are aware that this application process is in place.
How much is in the special reserve fund right now?
It's just over 150,000. We put in anywhere from 7,000 to 8,000 a year and have removed very little since the statute changed a number of years ago because it was difficult to find legitimate jobs that could remove money. I've worked with a lot of my counterparts and with the State Department on why the statute is written such. The statute is, was written for forfeit property. They took the word forfeit out and opened it up so that it could be used for, if there were no abandoned pits, quarries or deposits located within the county, the special reserve fund could be used for other on-met reclamation need or for conservation or environmental needs. And we're hoping that we'll be able to dip into that pot through those methods by vetting that out.
So in the past, it really hasn't been utilized at all then?
Not since the statute changed approximately, and I would bring that one up, was it
Six?
Six or seven years ago when the statute changed. So the answer is it stayed in that pot because it was difficult to find project that met the requirements to take it out. One is, and Randy can probably vet out here, the word abandoned pits. It was hard to determine if we truly did not have abandoned pits and were able to move into the second criteria. Because the statute's clear in saying if there are no abandoned pits or quarries or deposits located within the county, then the special reserve fund can be used for other purposes. And that was what was the hangup. You know, what does abandoned mean and are there? So we did an inventory and tried to attempt to find them and been working on this for several years.
And how, how does that build up? I am not quite
Okay, so when we take in a tax, it's statutorily divided out based on the criteria of 5% over the top of that's where you go, goes to administrative. And then it's 30, 30 and 15% stays into the reserve. 30%, just over 30% goes to the township in which the aggregate was removed. And about 30% goes to the county highway engineer or highway fund. And then 15% goes in this reserve fund. And that's dictated by statute.
And these new per diems and stuff, they come out of this fund?
They're gonna come out of, if it's approved today, right now, the 3% administrative will be increased to 5% administrative. And so the administrative fee will potentially be able to cover that additional cost plus administering the fees that we do right now in our office.
That comes out of this tax reserve. It's not like extra.
It will come out, not out of the reserve, it'll have to come out before the reserve is set. Administrative has to come off the top annually.
But it comes out of that account.
But that account, yes.
That's what I'm getting at, okay.
Yep, the reserve fund, you can only get it out by application.
Yeah, she's authorized to use up, maybe add it's at a three and then with these setting up the board, we just push it. That's the max.
Right.
The statute dictates five. You can choose to leave it at three, you know, to cover the costs or four or five, but the statute max is five.
No, I was just wondering where that money was actually coming out of. It's levy dollars or these tax, whatever it's called, tax special reserve fund.
Right. It's aggregate tax for the gravel tax, for removal of the gravel taxes they submit that annually. And then when we settle that, we take, the administrative fee has to come off first and then statutory, those three divisions of money.
This has been kind of a, when Barb checks her own other counties, they ask them what they're doing now, say, well, you figure out how to get it out of there, let us know. So it's been one of them.
We're inventing the wheel here.
They change the law and it kind of isolated what you can do with it. That's trying to navigate.
So all these counties are having pots grow and they can't use it because of the new statute? Or whatever the statute of whatever seven years.
Statute was difficult as well because, you know, how often do you have a forfeited gravel pit?
Right.
You know, so the money was, was probably gonna be better used by taking the word forfeit out, but it left it a little bit more difficult to understand what abandoned pits really meant.
Didn't the old statute have a bigger percentage that was actually going to the highway department? So we were using more and expending it to the highway department so it could be used on roads. Now we're limited on the statutes, been reduced on the percentage. So the pot is growing because we can't use it for those means. And I think Sherburne County has one of the largest reserve funds.
Imagine.
And right now, I have correspondence with Wright County. There is a flavor to look at the compliance of these particular submitters. Somewhat rumor that it isn't always being submitted correctly. In other words, those are taken out and the honor system is such that they may not be submitting their aggregate tax properly within the counties. And it's very difficult to monitor that. And so there is a flavor right now to look at some legislative funding for monitoring or compliance. At this point, the compliance that's done with the system is someone or some known party or township. When I give them the annual report, we'll say, you know, this is incorrect or I know this job, you know, is not part of this funding. And then I send a direct notice to them indicating that I have been given word that X amount of product was removed and that it didn't appear that they had made the payment and that they needed to make proof of the payment and we do collect that way. However, the auditor shall monitor that. It's very difficult to go on something that isn't a little bit concrete. And so I don't necessarily pick up on, you know, a rumor until they can give me very specific project names, roads and approximate product amount so that I can make a direct request.
What's the theory behind why they're so restrictive of it? What's the point of having a pot of money there that you can't use? That you're, I mean, is this an AMC thing that should be changed?
Yes.
Should be looked at.
I mean, otherwise, it doesn't make sense to me. You have
Initially, it was set up from one of the researches that was done is a county could end up with a very terrible forfeit pit that would need to be reclaimed or taken care of and that would be very, very costly. And so I believe way back in some of the analysis that we've done, that was the initial reason to give some money and also to provide some money to those townships that have, you know, have a use on their haul roads to get some funding. And then the reserve was to be able to cover the project that the county would uncover. That's, I believe, I think when Matt and Randy and I were really researching some of the history on it.
So Matt Helgert is basically
From our office.
Oh.
No.
At AMC, do we have, is there somebody down there we should talk to?
It's possible if you want to request or bring concerns regarding the compliance and some of those particular issues or the ambiguous words, if you want to use, you know, no abandoned pits, that's really hard to determine or to be factual about.
Transportation and infrastructure at AMC.
Probably.
I don't recall. How long is our permit good for? Oh, you renew every five years?
Six years.
Six.
And conversation has been enforcement of, you know, reclaiming the pits. We have pits, but are they technically abandoned? What kind of homeowner or landowner is gonna say they have an abandoned pit? You know, it's gonna be, well, that's my pit. I just haven't followed through with the interim use condition.
There's, we've been on, when I was on planning and zoning, we went to some pits that clearly hadn't been used, but they were renewing there.
Right.
A permit just to keep it active, so.
And then that's an avenue, that's like the previous one we talked about here. He purchased a pit with an expired IUP. And so that automatically with it, you have to have an active permit to apply for gravel tax funds. And so he bought it and, you know, so we don't know if he assumed the property at a discounted price because it was that way and, you know, so there's lots of questions there and he'd need to reapply for a permit.
What does an application cost for?
496.
So from his standpoint, pay the 496 to have the potential to get out the funds to help reclaim this property. He'll have that opportunity.
It's possible. There's also a lot of discussion in our committee on when is it personal gain? And when, when you reclaim, would you invest time to put it in another program that would then fund you another government program as well? So there's, there's a variety of different sticky points.
If you close a pit and then you put that five acres in CRP or something like that, now you're, you know what I mean? You're getting another payment on top of a payment. So there's that little sticky point.
But when you vet that application out, that would show, they have to?
Well, the opposite. They won't put it in CRP until after it's closed, you know what I mean? So I, I think that would, that's something that should be. I guess we'd have to dig into that with FSA or something like that to find out.
My thought is that we're gonna be back with revisions again because this is really difficult to put on paper and it has taken a long time to come to the very first one. And then as we go through an application, you know, we find other concerns that need to be addressed and like Steve said, we'll see applications. We don't know what we'll see and what will need to be vetted out on those particular applications. Keep in mind that in the application that they cannot exceed double what they're asking or $10,000. So the requests are capped, very carefully capped on this. So that'll help.
And I believe we put a minimum in the account too that we would go into, correct?
I didn't put that in here. We talked about that numerous times. I did not get that terminology in here because I think in discussion as we were working on this between Greg and Phil, that would be something the committee itself would do based on the quantity of applications that we had.
So if you pay out of the reserve fund to reclaim the property, is it then inspected to make sure that those funds were used for reclamation?
The answer to that should be number six. On completion of that proposed project, both the county public works and planning and zoning office and consulting with any government agencies if it's necessary, would inspect that for compliance. So we believe we would have it covered by those two departments with their expertise. Other questions?
Did we have a motion on this one, Julie, or not?
I can't remember. Motion on this.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to move to approve updates for the aggregate application form, reimbursement application process and findings of fact criteria form.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Very good, thank you. Here's the county.
Motion to approve the payables.
Second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion that has been seconded. Do we have any discussion about the payables? Chance to look those over?
Got one answered yesterday.
Questions, comments?
I have my questions answered.
All right, we will then take the vote. All those in favor of approving the payables say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Greg Schultz, Land Use Director. Today for the board, we have one IUP, one CUP, one rezome, we're pulling very flat, final plats. The first one will be the IUP for Thomas Old. And that is a, for 20-year after fact interim use permit, top rated level two, home occupation. The manufacturers and rebuilds turbos and does medium duty diesel truck service. Business operates Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 5:00 p.m. currently, 10 parking spaces. Currently is employed five employees. He has had up to seven employees at one time. And right now he has five, maybe ten on experience, more than what he's currently been through the path. So he's asking for 20-year interim use. So, he's asking for twenty-year interim use permits via that property. One of the conditions I put in was that if he goes over fifteen partner, open employees, that he will have to, um, his own community property.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, IUP for a level two home occupation for a turbo and diesel repair shop in part of the northwest, one quarter southeast, one quarter section, one township, one nineteen, Darwin Township.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion? Why is it called an after the fact?
Because we just, we discovered, enforcement officer discovered it after a tip that the business was running on this property. So, it's a double permit fee. He's been in business about two and a half years. He started by himself about two and a half years and he expanded to five. He was at seven at one point, now he's at five. He'd like to keep it at five, he tells me. Yes, so this was, something that was called in, was investigated and through the process after we nudged him to get the IUP, not voluntarily, so.
Any additional questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
The next one is a CUP for a Anderson property for his nephew. Julie Anderson. This property is, uh, located in section nineteen township one nineteen, or twenty-nine actual township for parcel zero seven, zero two seven six zero two zero. This is a conditional use permit to establish a building eligibility on anyone's own land to exist, providing the parcel of the property has at least twenty acres entirely with a quarter-quarter section. It was purchased after two thousand and one. They're using this provision to gain an eligibility as they were unable to gain an eligibility through building entitlement transfer. And, and also for a plat, then inconsistent with our orders, would have been considered a spot zone. You wanted to do an R one, R two plat in this territory.
So, in this case, they bought the six acres without a building entitlement on that six acres, right?
Twenty acres.
Well, it's twenty acres they bought. But there's no building entitlement on it. And in Meeker County, you need to have a building entitlement on that twenty acres for you to build.
Yes.
What we're saying is we're allowing them be, just because they asked it.
This is a CUP, and what they do is they have to take out one acre of total for the dwelling site. And they have to have at least five acres, you know, put into a, uh, a conservation easement. Along with that, so they have to take out six acres of those twenty acres, put in this program to, to.
What's that, what does that, what's that mean? The con- conservation easement?
Open space easement, and they can't build anything, they have to be left wild. It's an open space easement, that is.
But technically speaking, they weren't supposed to build on it anyway though, right? The twenty acres.
Correct. It was no eligibility. But if you look at our ordinance, it allows for people that have twenty acres or more within the same quarter-quarter section, if they want to use this provision through a conditional use permit. They pull out one acre for the dwelling site, it's total, or five acres or more. It's open space easement. They can be allowed to have building eligibility on that six acres that they pulled out of the twenty acres.
So, when they do, so when someone does buy twenty acres, that's the one provision that we have in Meeker County is that you can take one acre out for the building as long as you put five acres in this whatever.
Grant space.
Yep.
Grant space. And that is a provision in Meeker County?
In the ordinance, yep. And order's eleven point oh one, point D, point four, yep.
Okay. I just wanted to
Yep.
understand that better.
Other than the development rights transfer agreements and the replating and the zoning, this is how they do it. As long as you have twenty acres or more in the same quarter-quarter section.
We bumped across that a couple of years ago, didn't we?
Yep. There's another one over by Darwin that went through a human, a Cletus human property. Did that about three years ago. Other than that, there's, this person's father had gone through the same process, I believe about eight years ago on his property. Did you think to this one, did you think to this one?
Well, this would be similar to what we talked about yesterday, it's a separate issue, but two tens on different quarters won't work.
No.
It has to be a twenty in the same quarter-quarter section. Can't have a ten acre, some of this forty, and you can't straddle the line. It's gotta be.
Do they have to work then with, um, like soil conservation office at five acres? They have to put it into CRP? Do they have to seed it down of any cut? No?
It's an open space easement, it just can't be developed by, they can't put the septic in, they can't put buildings in.
Man, Sterns County called the deed restricted. But a lot of times Sterns County, you know, on a four, you have to deed restrict. You saw, you might have to deed restrict fifteen acres or something like that. You can put grass on, mow it, you know, veil it for hay or whatever, but you can't, you'll never build on it, you'll never. And you get to pick, kinda where, within their guidelines, I should say. So, I know it's similar in other counties.
We haven't used it very often. Very rare that this one.
Since, in, uh, two thousand and six, two thousand and eight, when this maybe, we have less than five, maybe have five total that have used this provision maybe. Not used very often.
Madam Chair, move to approve an application for a CUP to establish building eligibility on A one zone land using ordinance section one one point zero, one point D, point four. Additional dwelling per quarter-quarter section for parcel zero seven dash, zero two seven six zero two zero with the conditions recommended by the plan.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
All second, Madam Chair.
Any additional discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item I have is for a rezone and full-size plat. The property could be located in section three township one eighteen, range thirty in Ellsworth Township, parcel zero eight zero zero four four zero two zero. Property owners have made application to rezone at one point. Five one acre A one zone property to R one rural residential district to allow for the development of a whole new plat. Phil Johnson Oasis, Reville Ellsworthia in the parcel. This property is located within the Shoreland District of recreational development, Lake Manuela.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, rezoning plat for Johnson Oasis, darling.
Be two separate votes. One will be on the rezoning, uh, and then this will be.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion?
Because I am the applicant, I will be abstaining as it will have a financial benefit to me.
So, this is a motion for the rezone first?
Yes.
Discussion, any questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One abstain. Okay, that passes.
No, for the preliminary.
I'll move to approve a preliminary plat application for one plot of Johnson Oasis. This property is located within the Shoreland District of Lake Manuela.
Do I hear a second?
All second, Madam Chair.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Are there any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next item I have is for the final plat. Lake Francis Views, a property located in part of Government Lot One, section eleven township one twenty, range twenty-nine Kingston Township in Meeker County, the parcels thirteen zero, thirteen one zero four four zero zero zero, thirteen one zero four five zero zero zero, and thirteen zero one seven six zero zero zero. Property owners have made application for the seven lot plat called Lake Francis Views, forty-seven point seven more acre, non-repairing R one rural residential district property adjacent to Lake Francis in section eleven township one twenty, range twenty-nine Kingston Township. This is for Al, Al Ranta in Michael.
Is that the end then? Are they, do they still have more land that they?
Still have land across, I believe, from, probably nineteen, I suppose. Another forty acres.
This is their third?
This is the second.
Second.
The Ranta shores, nineteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
On the lake. That was right on the.
This one's off the lake.
This is off the lake. So, the wetland, it's adjacent to, to the lake.
Both in the blue box, is that?
Yeah. And the site, where it says sites on it, those are the three parcels that this is going to.
Move to approve the final plat application for a seven lot plat of Lake Francis Views located in section eleven township one twenty, range twenty-nine of Kingston Township in Meeker County, part of which is located within the Shoreland District of Lake Francis.
Do I hear a second?
All second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Do we have any discussion? Questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item I got is a final plat, Richard Elizabeth Carlson, or the Birdwing First Edition. This is for approval of final plat Birdwing First Edition for property located that part of Government Lot Four, section six township one eighteen, range thirty-one Greenleaf Township in parcel eleven, has zero zero six four zero zero zero. Property owners have made application to establish a thirteen by one three acre, three lot plat called Birdwing First Edition. The, uh, this plat will have two lots, it'll have building eligibility, it's in the hot lot eight, is attached to this as well. This plat is repairing to the natural govern, natural environmental star lake.
So, I see that the bylaws and stuff is all cleaned up, cleared up. Everybody's okay with that now.
Yep, yep. Interchange of county representatives in there. homeowners association by law, articles of the corporation involved there. Approved by the, the recording, when this plat gets recorded, final recording.
That is, that one question, Greg, the townships approve of, do they have, I mean, is it required that the townships approve of all these? Is it required?
It's a return, current, I don't know if it's a requirement, but they've approved everything.
Yeah, I noticed that, last couple, I was just wondering if that's something that we require, or?
Well, it's in consideration if the township would say no, or the planning commission, they'll bring that up. It would be a consideration.
It hasn't been in the past.
Hasn't been.
That's a, a consistency.
No, the, the township, they don't need to require approval from township, but usually it's a kosher route to go that.
It's weighted on our opinion, the planning commissions.
Right.
But the township has to approve the access to a township road.
Yes.
True.
To prove the access.
At that point, it could be.
Right.
As a, for consistency, do we require, you know, I mean, on stuff like this, do we require the townships to at least sign off and be aware? You know, I mean, otherwise, they come to the county, get permanent, and the township is behind that.
Some townships, such as Greenleaf Township, require certain road specifications for that access off the road. For Greenleaf, if it's three or a lot, or lots, I believe it requires it to be tarred. They're one of the few, I think they're the only ones that require it to be tarred. Not just the access, but it has to actually be tarred, going to the.
But there's never been anything in terms of the township, other than roads, as far as they can have, they have to, you know. If there's an access to a road, they have to determine, yes, how the road is and how it's actually designed. You know, for, like Kingston Township, for example, has to be designed according to Meeker County specs.
Public road specs.
Yep.
So, that's, I would just think that, you know, whenever you're doing, I mean, the township should sign off before we grant, just to make sure that it'll be somewhere.
And I, and I recommend, I recommend that the client, that township signature is there before the planning commission. But it may hold it up, till you get some type of recommendation from the township.
I think when you send out that, that list, or give the instructions to a person that's doing this, that's on there.
It's on there.
Beneath that checklist.
That's what I, that's what I'm asking.
But it's not required.
You know, but most people would say it's on your checklist, I'm gonna do it, you know? That's, that's the kicker there. How would you react if they didn't have it?
If the township said flat out, no.
No, if, if they didn't come with the letter of recommendation from the township?
I would state that as a blank, we should have to have not, come, let that up to the chair and the commission, whether they want to vote on it or not. And it would be in the notes that we have not got comment from that, from that township. Just like putting in notes for DNR stuff, that we do not have comment from the DNR, certain lakeshore projects as well, at this point.
That was my question. Do all of these projects have to go through a DNR approval when it's on?
DNR is notified, especially for this is for lakeshore, but whether they comment or not is another issue.
Theoretically, though, it could be in our ordinance that an acceptance letter from a township could be required. Am I right or wrong on that? So, if we ever wanted to change that ordinance, we certainly could do it.
It's not a part of the current application.
Yeah, that's, that's why it just, I just think it's good business. The other government entity involved here, at least they're aware of what's going on, I mean, at the very minimum, you know? Just stand, you know, just a standard, but what's, you know, if you're applying.
You don't, do you know how other counties do that in terms of this or not?
No, I'm not familiar, but I don't know any case law that would prohibit that condition to be in our ordinance. If that's something that you, this board is interested in, Greg and I can work on reviewing that as an amendment.
Rather than it being a suggestion, make it a requirement, because I guess.
Put it on the application?
Yeah.
Make that, that box has to be checked.
I, I'd feel more comfortable, knowing, coming from a township route myself.
That's what I, that's why, because that happens.
Instead of assuming it's common courtesy.
And then the neighbor calls, the neighbor calls the township supervisor, and you don't even know.
I know.
Never heard of it.
Just a point, a point of information, though, when, when your office sends out notices for the public hearing.
Township.
Township is notified at that point, but I do agree with it should be a requirement. But the townships are getting notified.
Yeah.
But then, if they don't have a supervisor that has the time to get back for a, a comment or something, this would force the applicant to bring that letter with them. So, I would, personally would be in favor of looking into that ordinance change, but that's my personal opinion. So.
I, I, I agree on my end too. I mean, I don't know.
I'm gonna build a shed on that property. I just gotta go, let the township know I'm building a shed on it. Being, they, I mean, at least they know it's, they're aware, and I still gotta come to the county.
Well, we hope you don't come for an after the fact permit.
Ninety-five percent of the case, so no matter what, the, the townships probably will, but they do feel more.
Let's just keep everything the same.
Yeah.
I guess these ones are a little more involved, that's why I'm bringing it up. So, yeah, ninety-five percent of me that have any question, it's just.
Yeah.
At least we know what your, what your plan is.
Do you need action in order to make this happen, or can you just add that to the application?
I think we have to go through the ordinance change, the requirement that the public hearing.
Go through the steps for an ordinance change.
But you're, you're coming with a couple pretty similar, aren't you?
Ordinance changes?
Yeah. So, the timing's kinda almost.
We haven't talked about this though in the planning commission.
Well, if there's a.
Talked about it a couple months.
And if there's, if this is a suggestion, so I mean, if planning commission has something that. And if there's if this is a suggestion, so I mean if planning commission has something that they see you wrong with it, let us know. Yeah, I mean, I'm just I just.
Yes, especially if there's something in the law part that just goes, ugh, you're opening up a can of worms. Randy just says this is that's not a good idea.
She hasn't kicked me yet. Yeah, I just it's just something I I thought of a couple times and I just.
Yeah, I've yeah.
That's a good idea.
I mean.
If it's not a good idea, somebody let me know.
I can I can tell you from experience, I took a letter into the township and said, here's what I plan to do. Showed them the diagram. They signed the letter as we had no objections.
Yeah.
And I gave it to Greg. It's that easy.
Yes.
This is not.
But if that step was always you know, just consistency, the consistency to it, so.
That's the correct way to do it, but not everybody does it that way.
Yeah, that's what I'm I just think it keeps it cleaner and everybody in the.
Yeah, unless there's something there or there's like something where Randy's like, ugh, don't monkey with this. I would suggest maybe we look into it and see what other counties do and then if there's something legally that just opens up a can of worms and I just not touch it.
So all we need is direction from the board suggesting that this be reviewed and we will take a look at language and draft language together and then um get that published the same process as any other ordinance. And at that time, once when would you get approval from the county board? After the public hearing?
Yeah.
Right.
I'd make that suggestion for the review. I like that word, review it.
Yeah, and and I don't hear any opposition to the suggestion, so I will take that as direction and do the research and.
Do anything, we'll just offer direction.
So we'll we'll take that and we'll go and um do the research and have a presentation with the planning commission and then come back to you in the future.
Excellent.
Perfect.
Thanks.
Now, back to the.
Sorry.
No.
Took a curve.
Yeah, that's okay. Back to the bird wing edition here. Would we like to make a motion?
That's a lot of reading. Somebody else has turned.
Coming out of Greenleaf.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to move to approve the final plat application for a three lot plat of bird wing first edition consisting of lots one and two, which have building eligibility and outlot A. The lots are located in section six township one eighteen range thirty one of Greenleaf Township in Meeker County. This property is located within the Shoreland District of the Natural Environmental Star Lake.
Do I hear a second?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none will take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Amy is not here today, so she asked me to present her items. So this is for assessor's office changing the part time position to full time position that she had in her office. She states that the assessor's office has many challenges that must be addressed and must comply with the Department of Revenue. I believe you've got the Department of Revenue's letter from August twelfth stating all the past changes you have done to look at in the near future. So with that, she wants the full time, the part time position, which I believe is approved in the budget. Twenty hundred and a hundred and a budget to a full time position for administrative technician spot.
So this is to replace the one that quit and the personnel approved that moving to full time. I'll make a motion to approve the request for a part time administrator technician to full time.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? I have a question. The attached letter that we received. I was curious, do the various departments have um reviews like this done to make requests for additional? Turning part time to full time, adding another person due for how how did this even come about? That this property tax division, Minnesota Department of Revenue, they came out and did a study to give us this letter of recommendation?
Yes, they came out. The assessor department.
Whose request?
The state.
So.
State came out.
So anytime a new county assessor is hired, the state will come out and do an evaluation and and speak with that new assessor and provide them with recommendations. So that this they line up because of that, but it is coincidental.
I see.
It was not related to this request.
They didn't recommend the full time. That's Amy recommending full time position. The state just recommended these changes or she looks at these these items that have requirements to be an assessor.
So will there be a follow up to see if they've implemented any other recommendations that they made or what's the expectation on us as a county?
She she has reviews quite often this year, particularly with that Steve Hurley. He's the representative of the county, so he comes up quite often.
I believe if I remember right, Amy's presentation back a few months back, she said that she had, you know, I'm here to. To get X done and then they'd reevaluate from there, so.
And I think when she came to personnel, Andrew, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but she wanted another assessor and we said we thought that it was a little soon for that. And so we went in agreement to put the technician to full time and now that hasn't worked out, so. Because we didn't know where she was gonna she hadn't been in the position long enough. We didn't feel to make that request at that time and I think she was fine with that until.
We we asked her to come back basically the following year, next year to put it into the budget for twenty.
So then we'll see where she's at.
Yeah. This will replace the one that just resigned.
I was curious about how often or who who even.
Well, that's a good that's a very good question.
Who calls for this? So. All right. I believe we need to call for the motion, right?
The motion has been called and seconded, yeah.
Motion was called and seconded. Any additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none will take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Greg.
Deal?
Yeah.
I'll be okay, but I mean.
All right. Randy, are you going to take on the next item?
I am.
Okay.
Good morning, Brandy Chief by Meeker County Attorney. Here I also have Office Manager Mandy Pollak to help with any questions regarding any of the numbers or statistics. Um here again at the request for provisional staff for an attorney for a two year contract consistent with the coronavirus relief A R P funding. Um I was requested to provide additional information regarding numbers. I have done that in the R V A. In addition, I have some slides that I wanted to um provide the commissioners with additional information. So the backlog that we've been talking about is um something that Chief Justice Gildea has required us to um meet with our justice partners within our eighth judicial district. And every district is having these meetings and they're discussing numbers and what the goal is is try to get us back to a state where we are manageable. I. I can't say for certain if this is just solely based upon COVID or if it's just a review of case law or case numbers and trying to take this opportunity to to um reduce them. So in the Meeker County, in our district meeting, we discussed specifically that's Meeker County is um we have sixty-one Meeker County major criminal cases reporting, which means that our cases are a hundred and eighty days or older. And what they're talking about with major criminal cases, they're not talking about misdemeanors. They're not talking about traffic offenses. They're talking about felonies and serious gross misdemeanor cases. So city attorneys are not involved in this plan. It's just county attorneys. Um for reference, city attorneys only prosecute misdemeanors and some minor traffic gross misdemeanors. All felonies and juveniles are handled within the county attorney's office. Then we have seventeen cases that are three hundred and sixty-five days or older. What the court is saying is that we need to reduce our backlog by twenty percent, which puts us at about three cases a month. Doesn't seem like a big deal, except for these are s- uh serious felony or gross misdemeanor cases. A felony requires a jury trial or a court trial if that defense elect, but they require a jury trial of twelve jurors. That's becoming an issue with space and recognizing that individuals um are coming in and we're having to um address the courtroom when it comes to jury trials. Which is essentially slowing down and adding an extra day of jury voir dire, which is jury selection. In here you can see that in two thousand and twenty, we um I required the attorneys to continue to um process complaints. Other counties such as Stearns, they were holding back complaints on drug offenses, trying to wait until they actually were in court so that there wasn't a case backlog. I wanted to move forward to see if we could still try to resolve cases through plea petition, through remote hearings. So we still continued to process cases. There was nothing that we held on to. Um and at this point in two thousand and twenty, we were processing a hundred uh one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine cases. That's an approximate. We just divided it by twelve. Um so it could increase um for two thousand and twenty-one yet. So we're basically on target to continue the same trend that we were last year. And something else to keep in mind is when we're talking about the projection rate of twenty percent reduction, which means three cases, that means that we're also required to have a hundred percent clearance rate. Which means no cases shall go over a hundred and eighty days and especially go over three hundred and sixty-five days. So they're saying you need to keep continuing to resolve cases without getting past that deadline. What has caused a little bit more um strain on our office, which is going into effect in October, so it's not truly in effect now, is that we're looking at three criminal trial blocks per month. We have two judges, one full time and one half time that do criminal only. So what the court is talking about in this backlog plan is only criminal. We also have that child protection arena as well and we have one judge that is solely assigned to child protection cases. They're coming in and they also have a trial block. So what used to be five trials on a block, which means during a week, has now been stacked at ten. That means you have ten defendants, ten defense attorneys, and you have to have at least a prosecutor on each case. So you have at least one prosecutor working ten case of those ten cases. Mind you, these trial these trials are now going to be proc- or county attorney's office, not not necessarily city attorney's office. So everyone in our office is basically having a trial. With that trial means you have to prepare, you have to have witnesses, you have to have victims, subpoenas are out, law enforcement is notified. So there is a um requirement that we are actually being ready. I'm not opposed to having trial set because it also puts pressure on the defendants to resolve cases. So without having the trial block, cases were getting stacked because they weren't having to come into court and actually face the reality of the consequences. If you can just delay, it's um seems to be less of an incentive to resolve cases. So I do agree that setting trials is the right avenue to try to resolve cases. However, we can't just be stacking these trials and acting like they're gonna resolve. There is nothing to say that a defendant um will say, nope, I'm going to trial. He can say, I'm gonna resolve it the day before and then all of a sudden turn around and say, nope, going to trial. We have to be prepared. So there is no exception um regarding that. I mentioned that there's the criminal and civil blocks that overlap. Um I wanted to give some numbers regarding trials and that's important. So jury trials are where you have um jurors come in, they're sitting there, they're making the decision regarding guilty or not guilty. A court trial is where it's left up to the judge because you have the judge making the decision. There's not as much um jury selection. There's the closing arguments are a little bit shorter because you're not trying to explain something to a layperson. So the number of days of trial for court is less. However, you still have to do all the same work regarding witnesses and victims. Um and as you can see, the trend is um within the Meeker County Attorney's Office is we're judicious with the trials that we're taking, the cases that we're taking to trial. It is extremely expensive on a serious felony offense such as a sexual assault or first degree assault. We're bringing in sixty jurors because of such a traumatic um case that we have to talk about facts that make people uncomfortable. And you would be surprised of those sixty people, how many have actually encountered a traumatic experience such as sexual abuse themselves. And so it's hard for them to be fair and impartial when they've either been on a victim or they have a criminal record where they've been an abuser. So a lot of individuals actually get removed before we even get them to be seated in the um jury panel. So you talk about all those people coming in. You talk about having fourteen jurors because you usually if it's um more than two days, you have two additional alternates. You have fourteen jurors sitting for that time and then you have witnesses such as law enforcement getting overtime. Now you talk about the trial itself is also costly, but then we're looking at the fact that we have to do trial preparation. There's got to be at least an hour set with our law enforcement officers. You have to have a conversation. You have to review the body camera with them. You want to make sure your questions are being answered and they feel comfortable testifying. Sexual abuse cases, which are a lot of the backlog, um you have victims, victims who are twelve years old. You can't just have a conversation with them on your first meeting. So often my meetings that I have with um small children, it's usually three to four meetings and it's over an hour a meeting. So you're talking four different times that I'm meeting with these individuals to try to gain a rapport so that they will actually disclose on the stand. As you guys recall, there was a very serious assault that occurred regarding, they used to call it a shaken baby case. Now it's a traumatic brain injury of an infant. That was a five day jury trial in two thousand and nineteen and there was comments made about how expensive it was that I had a staff member from Meeker Memorial come in and have to testify. So those are the consequences of actually going to trial. Those are the people we're trying to meet with and prepare. So when we're talking about trials themselves, the trial and and the trial is the the best part. That's the fun part for the attorneys in the office. It's the preparation that's the tough work. It's the motions. It's arguing to keep stuff out of court. So um just because we're having the number of trials that are reflected here doesn't mean that the work isn't going into it. And the way that the office operates, because we're prepared for trial, defendants will often take deals because they're realizing the state's prepared, they have their motions addressed. And they're making great arguments and the court is in favor of some of the state's requests, so the evidence is stacking against them, which forces resolution. Oftentimes pleas are happening two days before trial. Trial blocks are starting on Tuesdays or Monday. Pleas are being taken on Friday or Monday. It means that attorneys are working over the weekend to resolve cases. What's also interesting to note is within the last year, we've had some very serious um uh one was a um incident that happened in not last October regarding the um attempted homicide where there was a shooting and the individual, the victim lived. That involved four co defendants plus a drug raid that stemmed out of that. That is unusual for Meeker County. We had a homicide in March. It was set for a speedy trial demand that was supposed to go to end of August. I essentially and I think everyone kind of knew, I shut down operations in the office um regarding some of the civil stuff so I could address what was going on criminally. So that is an unusual um circumstance for Meeker County. I hope it's not a trend or a pattern because that would overburden our staff. We did not ask for the Attorney General's Office to come in and help with that. That is an option, um but we kept it um internally and uh worked that case within our office. Child protection, you can see that um we had a good year in two thousand and nineteen and however, we are now at four trials. That doesn't mean that we're not contesting evidentiary hearings. Parents aren't contesting issues. This is specific to termination of parental rights. And so we're already at four, which is where we were last year. The reason why there was more so many trials for child protection is that they were allowing it to be virtual. They found that it was imperative that we still have virtual um hearings for child protection so that um we weren't gonna get behind it because of children. It was imperative to the children's needs. And then going on, this is my request is an allowable use per the U S Treasury based upon a document that they submitted on July nineteen of two thousand and twenty-one. If you go to section two point one nine, you will see this language. Essentially, the question asked in that was. Is the is it an allowable use for A R P funds um for attorneys, court staff to increase speed of case resolution and other expenses to expedite case resolution are eligible uses? And the question is, would expenses to address a COVID related backlog in court cases be? And the question is, would expenses to address a COVID-related backlog in court cases be an eligible use of funds as a response to the public health emergency? The answer is yes. That is specifically what I'm asking for. The county was awarded ARP funds, and those funds are supposed to be used in ways to actually address the concerns from the hu- health-related pandemic. I don't know how, I wouldn't be coming to you today if I did not feel that this was a reasonable request. It's an allowable use and it is necessary. Something that I want to note as well is, the Eighth Judicial District had to submit this backlog plan to the state court. The State Court Committee compiled all of these plans. And in these plans, they met with all justice partners throughout the state. And one common theme that came up regarding the Eighth Judicial District was common themes emerged throughout the course of internal and external listening sessions, meetings and discussions. Stress levels are at an all-time high. Several agencies have experienced an increased turnover rate the past eighteen months. And employee retention is becoming difficult. The stress of the growing backlog is wreaking havoc on everyone's well-being. While each county throughout the Eighth District is deploying a variety of techniques and strategies to reduce the backlog, all agree that they wanted to be part of the solution and are tied to the common goal of eliminating a black backlog by June thirty, two thousand and twenty-three. That is the judicial district recognizing that there is stress on these um, re- on the um, requirement on this backlog plan. And it's definite in my office, I can in good faith continue to have the, or expect the attorneys to work weekends, evenings, to have trials. I'm not about to lose the integrity of case resolutions and um, case um, uh, and the process of cases. What I'm gonna essentially, if, if I don't have the additional staff, I will have to review the case load, current case load, and I will have to remove myself potentially and become another line attorney. I had a conversation with um, Olmstead. They were approved one county attorney, or one assistant county attorney, one crime victim advocate, and one legal assistant for ARP funds. And I also had a conversation with Menominee County. They have a request in for one legal assistant, and it's provisional for two years. And so they already been approved. I also had a great conversation with the Todd County Attorney. In July, they actually um, received, the county attorney's office received an additional attorney. It's not provisional, so now they are staffed at five. He also, um, what was interesting is he mentioned that the Social Services Department got a grant to address WAPA cases, which is uh, uh, wrongfully obtaining public assistance, so welfare fraud. He has eight WAPA cases sitting on, on his desk because Social Services has pumped those cases out, and he said, I have no time to be able to resolve those cases. I have no time to even look at them. Right now, we're just trying to maintain a case level that is reasonable. He doesn't appear at county board meetings, he doesn't attend um, meetings. He is a line attorney and he's upstairs in court. And going through some of the um, Todd County Board agendas, you can see that he's there's a absence from the county attorney's office in those meetings. So what I'm saying is, I'm not gonna, I'm not asking for an attorney for twenty twenty-four. I'm not asking for an attorney to address zoning issues. I'm asking for an attorney to address what's going on with the current backlog and letting this board know that with the pressure that we're gonna feel starting in October one with this case, um, management of setting five to ten trials on a block, we are not gonna be able to maintain the um, case process that we are. In addition, I'm down a current attorney, so now is the opportunity to use the resources to hire out of the same candidate pool. It closes next week. And um, the way that my office operates is I'm typically losing one attorney, at least if one, if, if not two a year. And so I have no doubt that I will not have an issue of um, looking at you in two thousand and twenty-three saying, I'd like to keep this sixth attorney. I have him fully staffed. This is wonderful. I, unfortunately, that's not where we are in Meeker County. Another thing that I think we all need to keep in mind is that the um, graph or the chart that I have for attorneys documented is based upon population, not about geographic. Um, I just lost an attorney to Growing County, I've lost attorney to Carver County, I've lost attorneys to Hennepin County, to Sherburne County, and to Anoka County. And what I'm seeing is, we're a perfect spot to be a conduit for criminal activity. People are coming from out of the cities, they're hanging out in Dassel. We had a huge marijuana bust about a year ago out of um, Dassel. It's a pipeline on twelve, you have fifteen, you have fifty-five in Kimball, and going through Watkins. So we're a conduit for where all this criminal activity is occurring. Plus, you look at the surrounding counties that are um, around Meeker County. You have Candyway County who has way, a larger population with more attorneys. You have Stearns County, which we cannot compete with in salary. You have McLeod County, and you have Wright County. And Wright County has more attorneys, more staff than our office because of population size. But we have to keep in mind the criminal activity that's occurring as well. And that would conclude my report. If you guys have any questions on numbers, stats, um, any insight into this issue.
Well, I guess I would comment, I was in Public Safety Committee last week up in Alexandria and everything that Brandy just presented actually falls step for step with what's happening in law enforcement, public safety. Things are moving out west more violent crime. Um, outlying counties are seeing an increase in activity. And they're, right now, there's a need for four hundred and fifty peace officers in the state of Minnesota, and there's fifty in Alexandria going to school. So I mean, that's not a short-term problem. This is a longer term. You know, it's not a six-month issue. It's gonna take some time in the climate. Oh, they're towards law enforcement and the difficulties they're putting in front of them to do jobs. I mean, you're gonna, the lack of enforcement to our east is gonna cause problems to the west, is how I'm gonna phrase it.
When I look at this too, I'm trying to uh, look at it based on the, the complexity of some of these cases too in terms of what they can do now, it's gotta take more time, period. I don't know. I'm not a lawyer, you know? I don't like particularly paying for lawyers, but I think everybody always personally knows that for me, but you gotta look at this in terms of, you know, is this gonna be uh, a s- a situation where the, these different uh, uh, law proceedings are gonna be less complex or more? And I think it's gonna be more just because of the different uh, different resources that criminals actually have. And being that we're kind of a uh, hub for attorneys, where we're kind of like a farm system, I don't think we're ever gonna be, you know, we could always be in that situation where we're like the Meeker County Department where we always have a few deputies short or something. And that's kind of where I see Meeker County, you know? We might not have always, uh, if we approve this, we might not always have five assistant attorneys on hand. But you need a certain number, or you're always gonna have a backlog. And I don't think that's a wise decision for a county to have.
This is a situation where you need help. Obviously, there's a backlog. Where some of this research for various cases could be handled by someone other than the attorney, where we could get maybe more research people, assistant research people. I'm looking at dollar figures, of course. Um, but, or could a person outsource? My, my question, I look through the, the payables. And, and here's, here's a law firm, and here's, here's a law firm, and here's another law firm. And, and we're, we're paying for various law firms every, every time I, I see these payables, and I'm not real certain what those expenses are and how they play into your request, Brandy.
Madam Chair, those are great comments and I appreciate um, stretching the conversation to that. Um, so I pulled some numbers that we had regarding our employment attorneys. In two thousand and seventeen, we spent a thousand three hundred dollars. In two thousand and eighteen, we spent twenty one hundred dollars. In two thousand and nineteen, the trend started to change when um, there was direction regarding getting an employment attorney involved regarding mediation and um, union contracts. Two thousand and nineteen, we spent eleven thousand five hundred. In two thousand and twenty, we spent twenty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-two. And to date, we spent fifty-one thousand dollars on an employment attorney. Um, now, those were areas that I was working on in two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. And then um, regarding labor negotiations, there was a decision amongst um, the board to make that change to hire outside counsel specifically. So you can see how expensive hiring outside counsel is. There are times where I have a, I believe I have a ten thousand dollar budget regarding professional services that I use. Um, I rarely ever meet that. I think I'm only at like two thousand as of last year regarding outside um, uh, counsel. And I use that for plat reviews. That is a very specific area that I am not comfortable with and I don't want to give the c- um, legal advice that's um, not accurate. So I will outside plat reviews. Um, I think occasionally if we have a um, land transfer, we might have outside counsel, but those fees are being covered usually in closing costs. But other than that, prosecution is not something you typically can outsource. You would have to contract with someone because they would be under my purview. The prosecutor is someone that needs to appear in court. And so the legal research is a great area. I looked at and we had a conversation regarding whether or not we should look at getting a paralegal. We don't currently have a paralegal. Paralegal does legal research in writing. However, with the court's backlog, it's not so much the um, legal review that's causing the pinch. It's having bodies in the courtroom prepared for trial, meeting with witnesses, getting them ready, and actually having an appearance in court. And even if we don't go to trial, you still have to be prepared and confident that you can take a case to trial regarding these super felonies. The judge isn't gonna allow us to have a continuance saying, you know, attorney, attorney Brandy has three cases on this trial block. All of them look like they could go. Can we split them up? Yeah, that's, it used to be an accommodation. Now it's saying, these are set and they're going.
Madam Chairman, it's not unusual either for counties to have labor negotiation attorneys. That's, I mean, CCT has one. This county did it differently for a long time. When we had some other changes, there were some things that came up. So there's been some real necessity to get outside counsel. That's not Brandy's fault. That was a personnel choice in some areas, and I think you agreed with it a lot of, I mean, some of the things we were handling at the time.
My, my um,
I'm not speaking for you. I'm just saying, I don't, that wasn't a lot of debate.
If we're gonna use an employment attorney regarding um, employee issues, my request is if there's an employee issue, come to me. If I can help with it, I will address it because it would be at much, way less dollars. If I needed, um, I felt not competent enough to be able to proceed with an issue, at that point, I would trigger outside counsel, but all would come through me to kind of help save the autonomy for the county as well as county dollars.
Well, then the, the labor negotiations is what I, was, what the board decided to go with an attorney with. That was by a board vote two years ago, I think?
Yeah. Um, and Madam Chair, the item that you noted about seeing the attorney, different law firms in the, in the warrants, um, is typically court-appointed attorneys. So those are attorneys that are appointed to individuals that the county pays for. I think typically CHIPS cases, child protection cases, so.
And commitments. Thank you for that. Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have picked up on that as well. So you'll see that there's a huge trend in an increasing cost of court-appointed attorneys for the child protection cases as well as commitments, guardianships. So the court appoints outside counsel for parents, children, and anyone who is in need of um, a commitment or guardian. And so those, those um, attorneys will send bills to my office. I'll review them to make sure they look within a reasonable amount and then sign off on them. Um, but those are just on the cases that we're handling within our office. So every um, attorney bill that is being covered there, there's an attorney in my office that's handling that case.
So it's, i- it's representing either the victim or the defendant in that case?
They would be the, the um, children or the parents. And mo- oftentimes, there's um, multiple children and they may have different fathers. And so, or mothers, and so we'll have more than two parents, and each parent, it has a right to an attorney. And then the children have a right to an attorney at a certain age.
And so ultimately, those bills are completely unrelated to the requests because we already still have to have an assistant county attorney who's involved in the case. Um, and so this is representing those other individuals involved, not the county.
But we're still, we, we still have to pay that bill.
Correct. That's statutory.
Is responsible. Even though we already have an on-staffed person handling that, we have these additional lawyer costs on top of that.
Right. So we have a assistant county attorney who advocates for social services and, you know, to make sure that the children are being protected. And then the attorneys from outside are representing the best interests of the parents. And a lot of times, we're not, you know, obviously on the same side. It's adversarial. And we're required to have representation for those. They're in a separate budget, and I think we're up to um, at least, is it a hundred and fifty thousand?
Hundred and fifty thousand is what we've budgeted for next year. The county attorney and I have looked at some options in order to try and control those costs a little bit better going forward. But this is one of those items that unless there's time in, in their office to work on this project with me, there's, we, we really can't tackle it. So let's just walk through it.
Stearns County has contracts with specific outside counsel, with attorney, parents' attorneys, and so they're assigned and then they're going through within their contract. And they're bidding, which kind of reduces the amount of money that the county is potentially paying because it, it's a bid contract.
I believe it's a flat fee per case, up to a certain number of hours.
So madam, so when I look at these numbers, which is what I was interested in, I would have liked to seen some of this before today maybe, but we have five county, number of assistants. Is that counting you?
Yes.
So we have five by population. We actually have more than everybody than Lax. Lax has eight for some. I'm assuming that's got to do with demographics.
Todd, Todd has five, no.
And okay, so, so when I look at that, I mean, if I'm strictly looking at that, I don't, I see that we're doing quite well. There's always been a turnover. I don't know what the training is in the turnover. My other concern is the financial impact over a two-year period out of this money. That's one thing, but I, I don't know how you hire someone for a two-year period. And then I worry that two years from now, we're gonna have five or six. It's, maybe, maybe it's needed. We do outsource more. I always like outsourcing better than hiring more employees because when we have employees, we have employees. And these CHIPS cases are, I mean, I think it's pathetic what goes on with that. We've had that discuss, that's not your fault. Everybody has to have an attorney. And, and we're, and that's not gonna change. So when I look at the numbers, I was surprised how well we sized up per population.
And those are all good points, and I, that's what I was looking at too, in terms when I saw the other counties. But then I'm thinking, as a county board, we have to really decide, is our appetite fine with having sixty-one cases on the backlog? And if this two-year thing can get that down to a more manageable level, isn't that a prudent way to, to spend our money? And then in the future, maybe there, for, you know, when the two years is up, maybe you outsource these so- social service problems or something. Or the, maybe the assistants aren't, county attorneys aren't equipped in terms of the, the different social service encounters. And I think, uh, I think it was Steve and I asked Paul, like, how much of this would be maybe captured back from social services? And he thought maybe thirty percent. But, you know, I don't know. But you really have to look at this, is does the county board's appetite for sixty-one cases in a backlog, I don't know if that's a lot in terms of average or not, is a good thing for this county? And is it prudent to use our dollars to actually get that backlog down? And in my mind, being uh, conservative by nature, I really don't want to have a crime backlog. That would be the one thing in the county that I wouldn't want. And I think it is prudent use of tax dollars to get that number down.
I think, I think this is a reaction to COVID. Obviously, the backlog is more because of COVID, so we're gonna have a reaction to COVID. They didn't have court. COVID has changed a lot of things. Do I, do we know how many of these are settled out of court? Do we, how many are actually gonna go to a jury trial? We don't know any of that. That's up to Brandy. We, so as a commissioner, the only control we have over our le- the only control we have over elected officials, and I don't mean it that way, but the only input we really have is budget. So when we start hiring more people, it's hard for me to believe over a two-year period, we aren't gonna hand up with six or seven attorneys. I just don't believe that sitting here because if we go from five, you're gonna hire and you have another one now. This five includes the one you're hiring.
Correct.
That quit. So you're gonna hire one more.
Correct.
For a two-year period. So we're gonna have six. So I just make up my mind on that. We're gonna have six forever. I really don't believe that we're gonna use this hundred and eighty. This is just me. Hundred and eighty-four thousand and then we're not gonna keep that attorney. So I'm just going to end into that with my eyes open when I take this vote.
A and a lot of your points, I agree with. The one thing where I feel like, you know, where we could get by, where we end up, don't have a full additional attorney on staff, it's the fact that we have a higher turnover rate. And if we see the backlogs down, there's no need to go and say, you know what, this was a two-year plan. This is what we had planned on. The backlog is down. We don't need the additional attorney and we can make that call because I think the turnover is always gonna be there.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know what causes the turnover. I don't know if it's geographic. So I don't know if it's money.
I don't know either.
I could tell you. I um just have reviewed an exit um interview and said that the um the best part of her job was working with her coworkers. Um the worst part is the fact that she's gonna have to leave because she wants to be closer to home.
To her and what?
Be closer to home and the pay.
So it's location.
And pay. Um I fear that I will have another attorney to will be leaving me to go for higher pay um relatively close location, and so that could potentially happen as well. And it's because I'm experiencing the same thing that Sheriff Cruz is experiencing. Why would you work in Meeker County when you can live in Meeker County and get paid more out of Stearns County? I do it because I'm born and raised here and and it's a passion. Fortunately, I have um one staff member who's been here for uh I believe it's six years now. And that's what I call experience. So I don't have the most experienced staff. When you're talking about having attorneys within the office who are gonna be in court, I can't just send one attorney upstairs on a court, on a jury trial on a sexual abuse case. Either I have to be in there or I have to send two attorneys. It's not an area where you can have or homicide. You can't take that case yourself. Um drug cases, that's a little more black and white, but there's still issues. So when we're talking about number of attorneys, I need bodies in the in the courtroom. I need bodies that are able to be able to do a jury trial and depend upon each other. And I am concerned about the morale um within the office. If I'm pushing them to go to trial, I will be in trial with them. It's a passion of mine. I love being in the courtroom. That's gonna, that that will probably happen. But an effective leader is one that is able to delegate and be able to help. I need to be available for these attorneys as well. And when I am um in trial mode, I'm just like them where it's all hands on deck with trial. And 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 the frustrating piece for the county attorney's office that for me, as an elected official, I'm not in the business to make money in the county attorney's office. The number of staff that have been added over in social services is um exponentially grown. But rightfully so because they are funded positions. But guess what adding staff over there is doing to my office? It's putting pressure on there and we've been navigating that by working together. Without having good working relationships, we would not be efficient. So I'm not asking for a paralegal at this time. I'm asking for an attorney for two years. And if it's by a contract, the contract expires. You as a commissioners, um all five of you can vote no if I ask you to um extend it. But I would hope that the commissioners today understand that I'm coming with this request because as it was stated before at a different meeting, this is a different year than you wouldn't be hearing me make this request.
What are these other counties handling? Do their lawyers, do their attorneys have the same number of cases as our folks do?
I don't have those numbers to be able to share. It's based, that's why I said it's based on um geography and not on it's not based upon geography or crime statistics. It's based on population. I'm assuming that Malax probably has a higher population or has a higher criminal caseload than we do or the cases are maybe just a little more complicated.
So I was curious if we have, if we have five attorneys now, do they each get, they each get three hundred that they have to deal with or how all of that is divided out?
And they go by ca- um kind of case weights. So a sexual assault case is gonna be way heavier and worth more points than a misdemeanor traffic offense. So you can't go per case filing. It's based upon this um severity of the crimes.
And are they divided by expertise of the individual too?
So we have to do cross-training for child protection cases. We have to have two attorneys because if we have an EPC, which is an emergency removal of children on a Friday at three and I have one staff member, one CHIPS attorney who is out on vacation, I need someone with an expertise to be able to pick up that case. So we have to do cross-training. You can't give all drug cases to one individual because what happens if someone is out or they're stacked on trials? So we do a lot of cross-training. I primarily handle most of the sexual abuse cases because they are so specialized. If there's a homicide, I'm on those cases. Um you know, the the first degree assault for the traumatic brain injury, I was handling that. Complexities.
Thank you for the information and and to got it last Thursday because we were at Alexandria. So I had a chance to talk to some other county commissioners. Brown County has not responded to me. I didn't find anybody there. Lion County, which has a population of twenty-three hundred more, one attorney less. Um they're making, they have no requests to add staff. They're staying where they are. Um Wabashaw County, who I spoke with Commissioner Woby yesterday, they show here with four attorneys on staff, they have three. Of which one is pregnant with twins, seven months and has now gone on to bed rest and won't be back until after her maternity leave. They're moving forward with the two, not adding any requests. One of the issues that that kind of concerns me um as we spend our ARP funds is we really don't have a strategic plan for our ARP funds. We're spending upon a request. Um and I think Steve and I saw that in Alexandria, they had a couple of talks and and went through that and I'll I'll address that more later on. But um being that we have five, we haven't even gotten started with this. Should we be considering this at all right now? Maybe we need to see where this goes a little bit. We're trying to make a decision for the next two years and it doesn't start hitting and rolling until October, correct?
The ten trial blocks don't hit till October and they're not calculating case rates. But our judge has implemented it starting July one regarding increased number of trial blocks. So we've already feeling the pressure regarding trials. So next week is a big trial block.
And so I I'm just struggling with this a little bit. I think we're, excuse me. Um if Todd just added a fourth to go to five, they have a little bit more populations, really, we're just going population figures there. Came up to match our five. I'm I'm just, I'm I'm struggling to say, let's go to a sixth. Uh I think we're early in the game. I don't know that this is a timely. I don't want crime in this district or in our county either. But as this goes, how many cases are gonna go away? How many cases are gonna get plowed out? How many, how quickly is it gonna dissipate? You know, those are things that you'll find out as you begin. So I am reluctant to support, to support this request at this time.
In response to that, Commissioner Johnson, the district court is gonna be adding judge time. They have it in the budget through ARP funds requesting from the state that they have additional judges, magistrates come in and address some of these cases. We're gonna see an increased number of judges, which means we will have to increase our court calendar. And regarding the um timeliness, it takes onboarding time. And so I'm looking ahead to try to make sure I'm protecting the staff and the morale and the ability to maintain a sufficient level of um going to trial and having these cases be heard. Um I can tell you that whatever decision this board makes, we will not be losing the integrity of case resolution. I will be shifting job responsibilities and looking at um other ways to reduce my my workload and other civil workloads within the office. Because I owe it to the community to make sure there is not crime that is gonna be um allowable.
And and I respect that. Thank you. But by the same token, maybe that should be looked at now. Why wait till you get a disapproval? Let's see if we can do something now, getting ready for it.
Can you clarify that? No.
Um you said you would have to shift workload and start rearranging. Have you looked at that already?
That would with all due respect, it would be in my time on Tuesday mornings. It would be my time at meetings. It would essentially be putting me as a line attorney almost full-time like Todd County. When I talked to the Todd County attorney, um he said if I could get a sixth attorney, we would actually be able to maybe maybe have our heads above water. But right now, even with the fifth attorney, he's still not going to board meetings. There's no expectation and change of caseload. Um he also has thirty thirty-some years of experience in his office. He has staff that have more experience than my staff. So we're looking at an ability to be able to go to trial and actually successfully take cases. I'm not just taking cases just for the purpose. I'm taking it because of the integrity and because that's what a victim's wishes are or that's what we define justice as. Um we have a eighty-seven elected Zoom meeting every Wednesday morning and we have discussions about what's the trends in going around. Not all eighty-seven counties attend. The county attorneys that are actually listed on this um were not in attendance. And I asked because I knew that I was directed to, what are other counties doing in response to ARP requests? And they said, our commissioners are asking us, what are other counties do? So I am early, but it's because I have an opportunity to hire now and I have an opportunity to be able to take advantage of onboarding two attorneys at the same time, knowing that I have a two-year contract and to address the situation upfront. Because if I come to you in December, it's too late because now I'm onboarding someone where I'm in the middle of trials. So it will be too late.
How long have you been short now?
Two weeks.
Just two weeks. So how are you handling that? I mean, who's somebody picking it up down there?
I am. I was in court yesterday afternoon. I had a meeting with Andrew that I had to cancel.
So you're picking up some more court time?
Correct.
And you have some people on the hopper now that you're gonna be interviewing?
The uh the pool doesn't close till next week.
When when this came through in the packet, I I started to contemplate our use of these ARP dollars. And after last meeting, I I I was bothered by the fact that we had the county fair thing that didn't go through. The Humane Society did go through. We're starting to see um what I now have labeled the wish list. Different departments are coming to us and there's a little one here and then there's a big one here. And then we see them and we deal with them and there isn't a real plan for how we're going to spend the ARP dollars. Or even, this was beautiful, how how the actual, I'd like to see the criteria that we actually can use these ARP dollars for and then generate a prioritized list of of projects. I I didn't know if we could even use the money for the hiring of a person, but we can. I thought, well, maybe it's just for equipment or for a building project. Or what can we actually use this this huge amount of money for instead of a couple thousand here, hundred and eighty-four thousand there? I would like to have a discussion with this board. How do we move ahead with making decisions in in a wiser fashion than one here and one there? Oh, we're gonna turn that one down, but maybe we'll accept that one. I'd like to hear your opinions on that. If I'd like to see a prioritized list, I'd like to see an actual description of how the funds can be used before we make any more decisions of how the money is spent. What do you guys think?
I would like to agree with with Commissioner Redson. I think a strategic plan needs to be formulated. One of the counties sat up there and said, they're not using any of their money on the county at all. They're going to use it for things that are gonna sustain into the future. So if you look back ten years from now, you can say, well, this happened and ARP money was used for it. I, this is a discussion maybe not for this particular moment, but um yes, I'm the I'm the same way. I I think we need a strategic plan. I remember when the Kears, I sat in the audience when you guys got the Kears dollars last summer. First thing you did, you said was, we're gonna spend X amount to the businesses. You set aside, what was it? Um a percent?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand. But you had a plan. You had a plan on how you were gonna move forward with it and and, you know, you vetted the plan. And I I hear what Julie's saying, you know, we're we're basing it on per request. You know, here's a request. You know, I originally really advocated for the hospital on that touchless communication. Right now, I wanna say no. We need to revisit everything as a grand total whole and say, alright, here's some buckets. This is where we wanna work. Maybe we wanna go out into the community and and get some community leaders from all over to form a panel to give us some recommendations. You heard Stevens County say they put a million dollars towards childcare. They set aside one million because it's such a big issue up there. But my point is, they're planning. They're taking a look. Doesn't mean they're gonna spend it on that, you know? But they're allocating, they're getting the a plan and they're working the plan. And that's something we haven't done yet is is to sit down and plan. You guys have been tasked with vetting all the things that come in. Thank you. But it should be a bigger scope than somebody saying, hey, you should send in a request for ARP money. And then it lands on you guys' desk and you gotta make a decision, you know, uh or a recommendation, I should say. It it would be nice for us to do like Wright County did and create those buckets and say, alright, here's what's in this bucket. Does this request fit? And if it does, then we move forward, you know? Uh like I said, I would like to have had this conversation at the end. I don't think it's part of the discussion on whether to add attorneys or not. But um I it is something I would like to see and that is a strategic plan for our ARP money. So that ten years down the road, we may be able to point to something and say, this is what we used our money for and it benefited sixty-five percent of our Meeker County residents or eighty percent or something like that.
But when you look at that ARP money, the way they figured it out though, is it is it is county cash basically right now. Period. Because of what they did with the revenue loss. So it's simple then. Then it's just like, okay, you have that bucket of money, prioritize what you want. There's there is an appetite out there to fix a social service building. That's gonna be coming out of that bucket. Otherwise, you have to levy for those dollars or take it out of the ju- the the reserve fund. All you have to do, I think in my mind, is I'm already in my mind prioritizing what we need because I don't want it just for just COVID, something short-term. Like you say, something long-term that affects it. You know, if there's a need for that social service building to be done, okay, there's a bucket, you know? Is we have to just decide, is our appetite for this county to have sixty-one back loads of cases?
I don't think that's fair. Because you're looking at a COVID year where the judge, you know, n- nobody.
And how do you, how do you catch up? How do you catch up?
Can I speak for myself?
Yeah, sure.
I don't want a backlog of sixty-one. Nobody wants crime in this county. But we're asking to use a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of rescue funds for an employee for a two-year contract. That's what the discussion is. Have we done everything we can to make sure that's the only way to solve it? I don't know if we had. I just saw this other information today. I could have seen that before the meeting today. It might have been helpful. I might have had some questions. When I look at how many county attorneys, every population-based, we're right in the number. We're right in the number. So if there's more to it, I need more information. That's all I'm saying. I'm not trying to be mean. But we, I'm gonna repeat, we cannot every time react by hiring more employees. Maybe that's not the answer.
I I'd like to know like
I'm gonna be very clear. I do not want crime in Meeker County.
Nah, yeah, no one does. That's a no-brainer. But how many ti- what is the social service department compared to other counties? Do you do you question that every time you hire a new social service?
Absolutely. Oh, absolutely.
How are we sitting in terms of that?
Absolutely, I do. And he always has says we're above average or below average, but a lot the the other difference is, you know, he finds these last one are being completely funded, right? We had a huge discussion. He had to come back again. We did not decide it in fifteen minutes. We always ask that. Absolutely. And we should ask that with every time we fill a position because maybe that's not always the answer. That's all I'm saying.
I'm afraid what's going to happen if we don't establish a plan for I'm afraid what's going to happen if we don't establish a plan for how to spend these dollars, that it's going to be a first come, first served. Who can get their request in, and then and then we we pick away at this lump of money? And then maybe some other really good ideas come up, or, oh, we turned that one down. Why did we do that? We shouldn't have done that. I would like to see more of a plan before we go about making decisions to spend out of that big pot. I I'm just afraid this is getting to be.
I'll I'll be honest, so the the only thing that can really take this da- this county down in terms of a a cash load is by overexpe- overspending on whatever we do to, you know, in terms of buildings. That's the only thing. And from my mind, I can pump the brakes real quick if suddenly this cost of this building gets too high. I can pump the brake and say, hey, you know, we got that EMS thing that we have to get, uh, the the Brian's thing that he came through. The pager thing updated. Those are a higher priority. But but I also keep in mind too that we may get township monies too that they can't spend, that have to be, uh, going towards like these A R P type things, but.
Well, I think that's asked, that asked, and it's and it's not probably belong in this conversation, but we all need to be part of where that money goes. We can't have just certain people deciding where that money is gonna go.
Oh, no.
And so to get a plan in place, and maybe there is one, maybe we just have it hasn't been communicated well enough to us, Andrew. Maybe that's.
I I mean, we we had a discussion last, at the last meeting about the items that that have been discussed to potentially go.
I think what they're talking about is direction, like where's the dr- you know what?
I understand. And so when we initially talked about it, the discussion that we had was we would do this as part of the budget process because we have the time. So part of it was, we reached out to the E D A to have a conversation about business expenses, because, you know, do we need to have a bucket for for businesses? Do we need to have a bucket for nonprofits, those sorts of things? And the response that we got back after a survey of businesses was, no, what we wanna focus on is workforce development. And so that's that piece right there. Um, we also have received requests from other organizations, the hospital, the H R A, um, E D A, um, I think it's a fourth, I don't remember what it is. And then we solicited from county departments as well, what sort of expenses would you wanna potentially have be included in there? And all of the things that we received are the items that were included on the list. It's difficult to say we should spend X dollars to this area because those of us who sit in the room don't necessarily know what that need is to develop those buckets. And so that's why we've worked with our our partners outside of the organization, within the organization, to identify where we have potential need and where we can, um, spend some of these dollars. So that's how we've done it today. We can certainly come back and have a bigger presentation about what is eligible expenses and have a strategic discussion at it at the work session probably in October to talk about that and, um, go forward from there. So we can do that.
But correct me if I'm wrong, once you did the revenue loss thing, all but how much can be spent on anything?
Twenty-five thousand, twenty-seven thousand.
Yeah, that that's, that's what we had calculated at that.
It's cash for the county. I don't, the way it got here, it got.
And and I wanna clarify on that. We we've talked a lot about, no, it's good, it's fine. But it requires, so the way that the revenue calculation, revenue loss calculation is done is you do it periodically throughout the four-year period. We project that we'll be able to calculate it all as revenue loss, but it depends on the way that revenues actually come in and the percentage. So, so.
So it could change.
It could change.
But probably not dramatically.
We don't know. The future is uncertain.
But you know, you, so go ahead, Steve. You have incident.
I'm gonna talk a little bit about some unpleasant things. I'm gonna predict that you're gonna see some not very, uh, cheap items coming forward. And having to do public safety, it's gonna get very expensive to do public safety. I know I mentioned this to Paul already. Uh, what came out of our meetings last week, and one of the reasons that county attorneys having issues is because they basically don't arrest misdemeanors anymore. And so when you stop arresting, and this was a large discussion last week with sixty commissioners in the room, when you stop arresting misdemeanors because they can't hold, they can't hold them. They, because that's, we're on a catch and release program. You are now escalating, that's like enabling, when you have people who do bad behavior and you enable that bad behavior at a smaller level, they're gonna graduate to a higher level, which is gonna put more violent crime within the boundaries of this county. Um, you seen the homicide and attempted homicide last year, which we haven't had in a while. Uh, I can tell you from being on the rescue squad, that the types of calls we go on are highly, um, much more unpredictable than they have been. You can see a definite pattern of increase of, uh, unpredictability in people. And it's not gonna be pleasant moving forward. The sheriff and the deputies over there, they have got a monumental task in front of them. Uh, we had a demonstration, Clay County Commissioner for Morehead, was a retired police officer. He did a demonstration of what they're requiring them to do, and basically, they have to, um, in essence, he said they need to hear the bang before they can fire. So they're putting cops in, uh, ugly situations and asking them to stand down. And until they're basically fired upon. Well, if you're, most shootings happen within seven feet. If you're within seven feet of somebody and they turn around and got a gun, you ain't got much time when you hear the bang. It's too late. So what I'm getting at is public safety is gonna be a big issue. It's gonna put a major burden on our sheriff's department. It's gonna put a major burden on the county attorney's department. And I, I'm I'm concerned, highly concerned, especially after last week's meeting, that, um, waiting too long is gonna be highly adverse. And whether that's adding an attorney or or a deputy or dispatcher or whatever, we we got some problems coming into public safety. And they're here. They're on our doorstep. And if you talk to Ramsey County and and Dakota County, a few of them, uh, commissioners are in the room, they think everything's wonderful because they've closed their juvenile detention centers and they've done all this stuff and it's working beautifully. But they haven't seen that the out, uh, then they start to understand that all the outstate juvenile detention centers are bussing at the scene because all they did was push their problems on somebody else. And until that comes full circle, and it does, but they, then their violent crime is extremely high down in the cities. Um, so they haven't quite figured that one out yet. But to us out here and, uh, people in that room on public safety last week, it's a pretty easy path to point out. And it's gonna come back downtown, and nobody's gonna be down there. So we're gonna see increased traffic, um, that we don't want out here.
You know, one idea that was shared with me by one of the counties on Friday, they said they were gonna take two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of their money, and they were gonna use it to make a deal, so to speak, with young people who are going into law enforcement. They will give you fifty thousand dollars if you will commit to three to five years with their county to pay for their education. I thought it was a great idea. I thought, wow, you know, uh, if they quit however, or get fired, they have to pay it back. But each year.
Has been put into those counties' plans as to how to use these funds. They're not making decisions on first come, first served. They, it sounds like those folks, did did they have a committee? Did they say, okay, we're we're the county board, we we've got other things to do, everybody has, we have all our department heads? Did they formulate a committee to come up with ideas as to how to spend these A R P dollars? And then prioritize a list, and then that list came before their county board? How how did these things get generated?
I don't know in that particular case how that came up. We were sharing information, um, just sitting and visiting. And I said something about our sheriff's department having such a hard time being able to hire. And they said, oh, yeah. I thought it's everywhere. Of course, it is everywhere. And then he just went on to explain that that's what they were doing. I I think we did hear about some committees when we, when we sat in the the general assembly. Some of the counties were using committees, community leaders throughout the community to have kind of like a think tank. They would bring the idea, and then, of course, it would have to be vetted out. I just, I, you know, when you were talking about public safety and issues there, I, that just brought that one to my mind, that that was something they were going to do. And I thought, you know, that might be a wise, wise thing to do too, or to consider, I should say.
Chair Chair Bredesen, I would just wanted to comment about, um, the first come, first serve. Um, I think you have a valid point. However, in the July nineteen twenty twenty-one, um, coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds frequently asked questions, which was put out by the U S Treasury, two point one nine specifically says that what I am requesting, um, for funds is a reas- is a reasonable request and is allowable. And the reason why this isn't budgeted is because in July, we got notice that there was gonna be a backlog action plan. And so I wasn't able to plan for this. And so I I do think that this is an appropriate time. I'm hiring now. I'm onboarding, um, and it's better to onboard two at the same time to get both training. They work with each other. It alleviates a lot of, um, training within, um, on Mandy Pollak's lap, on my lap, and the other attorneys as well. And so I think now is the appropriate time, and it is an allowable and appropriate expense through A R P funds. If we designate this truly as A R P funds and not necessarily through, you know, the liquid cash, there won't be any question in three years, was this, you know, do, was this allowed to come out of A R P? I, the request is valid, and that's what they did in Todd County to hire that attorney. And that attorney is not provisional. That attorney is full-time moving forward. And if they want to add another attorney, they'd be up to six. I'm asking for provisional, which means a two-year contract. I'm not sitting here asking.
I know, I'm not.
You're smirking.
I didn't mean to, Brandy. I apologize. I agree, I mean, you're making a good, I understand.
I don't have many feelings, but I do have passion for victims. And these cases that are being pushed out are affecting victims. It's affecting restitution. You are talking about a backlog involving little kids with. This is a big deal to people. We just had a crime over the weekend involving, um, uh, people on the lake where someone was wandering around. And it really disrupts people's lives when you have a, uh, violation of your privacy. Someone wandering in your yard, someone going in your home. Those are big deal to people. It may not be a true identified victim, but these cases matter to the, these people who are involved. And by continuing to having to push these out without staff, I don't know h- how we're gonna be able to maintain this caseload.
Do we have a timeline? I know we do. Remind me of it. What is the timeline for determining which projects will receive funds? How much time do we have?
Two years.
So the the funds need to be obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, so as we discussed at our last meeting, we have, uh, a number of projects that are included in the twenty twenty-two budget and a handful of items that were approved for expenditure in twenty twenty-one. So those items, we would anticipate moving forward with, but there's a significant balance beyond that of available A R P funds that could be used for other things.
And to be fair, I mean, we did prove this over to the budget committee to bring things forward. So I just think maybe, and we have outlined, and this is one of the requests, just like the hospital was a request and air conditioners was a request. Personally, I see the money going into doing some remodeling that we should have done when when our building projects got kiboshed because the price take got too high is basically what happened. But that's just my opinion. So obviously, we're gonna have to have more meetings at hand. And I wasn't smirking at you. You're 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 an attorney and it, you know, it's very obvious when you speak and you're adamant, and I appreciate that. I do. But I go back to the same thing. We're talking about hiring another employee, and that's my concern, and the the budget is. So that's the decision that has to be made by this board.
And I, Danny's point about Paul, we, it was most time class in college. I asked Paul on the, I don't know what the terminology for the, the, he has a backlog of cases to that he'd have to work on for recovering. And he said that his number was between thirty and forty percent max. Top end, forty percent of the wager recovered through.
I mean, you bill, you bill.
Thirty to be conservative.
All the work you do for social service gets billed to social service. I mean, eh, all the work that you do for planning and zoning gets billed to planning and zoning, doesn't it? So planning and zoning is part of your, just your job as county attorney?
Correct. The only one that I get reimbursed through is social services.
So H R, you don't, so if we have a, an attorney for H R that gets billed to you?
It used to. I think that actually changed.
Yeah, that got moved into the H R budget three or four years ago.
So we don't do that that way? Because I know that that was.
So what I'm, I just want to clarify, of the eight hundred and eighty thousand, there's about a third of that would be reimbursable through social family services through funding mechanisms.
You know, they're talking about, a lot about this fraud and abuse, but every meeting I go to, they're extending COVID things where nobody has to apply for a damn thing. Excuse my language. Just keep getting it from Prime West to SNAP to, they're getting all this money. I don't mean it that way. I gotta be, they're getting the same amount of money they were, because everything just keeps getting extended. So how you're gonna go back, and I don't believe we're gonna collect a lot, to tell you the truth. So I wouldn't hinge anything on that. Because all I see is extensions, extensions, and more. And it doesn't matter what board I go to, you know? Prime hell, Prime West, they don't have to reapply yet, co- because of COVID. You know, there's people with one kid getting eight hundred dollars. It's just, it goes on and on. So a bigger thing is fiscally, how we're gonna ever pay for this is gonna be the biggest nightmare that this country is ever gonna face in my, in my lifetime, probably, so.
Is this board and half million guaranteed deal?
Yes. Well, two, two and a quarter of it is in our hands. That is a hundred percent guaranteed. There's never a hundred percent guarantee that till we get the cash, but it is appropriated by law, and so we expect that we will receive the money.
Are all of these requests, and I I want, of course, the opinion of the board, can we place the A R P requests on hold and formulate a plan, whether that's done by, uh, an appointed committee or or by our administrator and department heads? Or how how can we sort of take a step back and think about this a little bit more before we continue with this every meeting, doing a little bit?
The the issue is, and and we did direct this. We have a portion of it already assigned into the budget. So we shouldn't step back from that. That was part of the reason we sent our preliminary levy where we did. So I think we're committed. We need to stay committed. That was our word then. We need to stay there. That's my opinion, guys. That's all. But stay.
And on that item, I'd like to clarify. The intent was, last meeting, that was the discussion that we were having, is how do we wanna spend the A R P funds in twenty-one and twenty-two? This item specifically got pushed to this meeting because the county attorney's office was working on gathering data in order to prepare to have this conversation. So I wouldn't anticipate that we'll have another, you know, discussion at our next meeting and so on, so on through the rest of the year. It it's going to be as part of the budget process is how I would, unless I'm directed otherwise, that's how I'd anticipate moving forward with requests and and spending for this.
And I think, like you heard Randy here talking about the communication system, and you have the, and the sheriff's gonna need certain things, and I think those are gonna keep coming forward. And then our decision is gonna have to be, are we gonna use that money for that? Or are we gonna use levy dollars? As Steve says, when we start having trouble a few, which is coming. I agree. So. I don't disagree with the process. I just think sometimes some of us don't feel like we've had as much input into it as we could have. And that's because of the way it's designed and the way that we gotta have only two commissioners at a meeting and many things. But I, do you feel a left, a little left out at times? I do on certain decisions. So I don't know if, and that really doesn't have to do with this discussion, but, and I don't know if we can change that and maybe have another discussion about it. I agree with Paul that we did our budget accordingly. We passed our levy accordingly. According to that, we have to stick with that. And then maybe have more discussion about other requests. I'll be very honest, when people call me, like, H R A, the air can do. I tell them to call you about that because I felt like that's what we were. Because I felt like that's what we were supposed to do, if they needed air conditionings or whatever that, and that can come out of that, or I've called you about things. Because I don't know who else.
And what I would suggest and what we can certainly do is um we can have a a big picture discussion about ARP. Um, we could do it later this year, I, or maybe even early next year, as we, the next item on our agenda, once we have a better sense of what that is gonna look like. Um, we have a bigger discussion about ARP to then drive the decision for twenty twenty three. It start to include, because I don't think what we want to do is have the ARP run significantly separately from our budget. Because it has to be included in the budget and whatnot, so.
And we've already done part of that.
Exactly, and so having a discussion early in twenty two to drive what we do in twenty three and twenty four, big picture, I think is is probably an appropriate way to go about that. Then we develop, what is our plan, what do we want to spend on facility improvements, where do we want to look potentially elsewhere in the community to spend some of these dollars on?
Because we've, we've, we've got time, we've got time.
Yes.
On it, and if I, just my comment would be, I think, and for Danny, if I'm speaking for you or or out of step, let me know. But I think the biggest elephant in the room for me and Danny on the on the largest part of these dollars is the cafeteria and the project over there. The WOLD's coming up here shortly, but I mean, I think that's, to be hon, I mean, HRE is probably about a quarter percent of the ARP dollars. You know, this is about a percent, you know, so I mean, I don't know if we spent five percent or committed five percent of the total ARP dollars so far, so I'm, I don't feel like.
Think we paid for vaccination clinics and.
That was the big one, was the vaccination clinic.
But I mean, there's a, it's still minimal in my mind, the big picture items are definitely gonna, are are.
They're coming.
And I think when we start talking about the architect here, we'll get more into coming up on the agenda for that.
And so I think what we're looking at today, to, this item is slightly separate from the bigger picture discussion. Because it's dealing with more of an immediate need as we've done with the twenty one and twenty two budgets. And so that's the reason we're discussing it today and and I think it's an appropriate discussion.
And I think we're gonna fill, I mean, with the, this being a temporary request or two year request and with the turnover there, I mean, that's, this is a position that's gonna get filled if this catches a. On our backlog and then it's a full position that we don't need to hire a year from now, you know, be looking for another one. You know, that that person being placed already and we don't even know if we'll make it two years and still be at capacity and it depends on the rate you're going. So I mean, if it's a hire now to put us, to get us caught back up and then it's the person is in place.
Here's what, what I'm thinking of, Brandy, and I'll see what you think of this. What if we try a twelve month contract and see where we are a year from now? And then we can revisit it, hire, you you've got the pool, you'll have two to choose for, you know, two, you'll have to get one to agree to a year. That, then we can see where the backup, we'll know a lot more a year from now. I would be willing to to visit that right now as a motion, if you could agree to that.
Do you think that we'll get a qualified candidate candidate to agree to a year?
We'll see, I don't know if you'll get one for two, but can we see?
Who is more palpable, because that's where we're at.
I mean, that's, that's what I'm offering, eh for my vote.
Negotiation?
No, no, well, no, I can vote either way, no, if you don't, that's fine too, that was gonna be my motion, no, but no.
So you think that we could find a qualified candidate for one year?
I don't know, I I don't know, you you said you have a pool of candidates right now, um.
Here's, here's another consideration, don't mean in a row, but with your high turnover rate, if I'm here, I'm a perfect slot in along the contract. And anybody who's coming here is gonna look at your turnover rate. And they're gonna say, wow, they get a high turnover, if I like this job, I'm probably gonna get to stay. Because I'll fill one of the vacant slots. So yeah, you might be conceding down a year, but in the big picture, maybe not.
If I was myself, a law clerk, and I looked at a one year contract versus a two year contract? You're putting me on the spot, so I'm processing, um, I'm not gonna say no, but.
Well, I'm just wondering if it's worth a try, because this is difficult for me.
Would you like to withdraw the motion and think it over and, or or not the motion, but the proposal here, the action? And bring it before the board next time? Or do you want to take that up on her offer or?
We're doing uh interviews, um.
October?
October.
Thank you, ends next week.
End of September, first week of October, so I'd like to have the ability to review the applicants, knowing what positions I have. To have those discussions, to move quickly, um, I'm anticipating it's, things are gonna get um heavy in October, heavier, um. What if I don't find a candidate for one year?
Hmm, you'll have to come back, but if I make a motion, you know, somebody else can be free to just make your motion and we can vote on it too, but as it.
But if you're proposing that, what if I, what are my, what is a suggestion then?
Well, why don't we, can we try and see what happens and come, if I make a motion that we look for somebody for a twelve year contract, twelve months.
That's what got us all more hired.
I know, it really didn't.
If if they have to stay for twelve years, we won't have the turnover issue.
Yeah, for a one year contract and then we reevaluate and then, like Paul said, you're, you you might be anticipating another person. Then you'll have somebody trained to step in and we will know more about this backlog in twelve months.
And and perhaps um a suggestion could be that as we go through the process and as, you know, HR and the county attorney's office are working with these candidates. If we're finding that the twelve month is not gonna be workable.
Call a personnel meeting.
It, that's what I was gonna suggest, is that maybe the the personnel committee could be delegated to have those discussions.
I want you to guarantee you're gonna be open if you're voting, which I know you will be.
But I would also.
I'd be working with McHale, so yes.
What I'm gonna, then you're gonna be thinking, now Beth really wants me to do this, so I'm really gonna make it work. Mandy's looking funny too.
Brandy, the other thing is, let's take a look at what it's gonna cost us to stop being a farm system. Not saying we're gonna spend those dollars, let's find out for sure why we're a farm system. Let's find out what it would cost us to maybe slow that farm system down a little bit, not saying we can spend it, not saying we can afford it.
Yeah, I think we kind of already know that, Commissioner Johnson, based upon the labor negotiations, I think you two are pretty educated on the major reason, and I don't get involved in that area.
Well, I mean, if it's just money, but you know what, I don't think, what I've learned in every board I've been on recently is money is not a top issue anymore. There are so many things out there that, you know, that's foreign for someone my age, but. Time off is important, being able to drive into Minneapolis like you said for big money, but live out in rural area, I agree with, that's important to people. More so than money, probably, so I don't, you know.
And that's, and the um, the office policy I have for us is it's a family first office. Um, you are going to take care of you and your family first and I will be there to support that. Because when you have a healthy um lifestyle, you have a healthy working.
I agree.
And efficiency, and so that's my concern with this backlog, is that it will start hampering on these abilities to take time off with their families. We are a younger office and younger family and it's important to have those moments with those kids. And so I actually encourage individuals to take time off when I can start recognizing the stress symptoms. And so I tell them, you need to take a day off, you pick two, I'll cover your cases and I will go up in court for them. And that's an important piece and I think that was reflective in the exit interview, for someone leaving, knowing that they're going to a different office that may not have that. And so when we talk about the backlog, we're talking about, I need competent attorneys in court, but I need healthy attorneys in court. And healthy means having that.
Is that a motion?
I can make a motion, but if Brandy's not interested in it, then I'm not gonna make, put her in that position.
Put it out, there's a motion, then the entire board can vote on it and then if it's voted down, then we can come back with a different motion.
So I'm gonna make a motion that we look for someone for a twelve year, twelve.
Jeez.
I got that year in my brain.
Oh, yeah.
There's more than we want.
Twelve month contract, reevaluate when we see where the backlog is, et cetera, et cetera. And if, whatever, Andrew, you know that if you find from, this just isn't gonna work at all, we'll call a personnel meeting and revisit it, okay?
I will second that one.
For discussion purposes, if I may chime in for clarification, um. Twelve months is a gift, to be able to even have twelve months in the office, so I respect that and I appreciate it. Um, it'll give a ray of hope for the current staffing, um. But when we're looking at candidates, what is the process to be able to communicate? I need to be able to know to how to formulate when reviewing the applications, when I come to the Personnel Committee. Is it gonna mean we need to schedule a Personnel Committee meeting immediately and bring it back to the board, or do you have full authority?
I'm gonna, Andrew, whoever you think that needs to be handled.
So typically the way, so I would envision this as being part of the negotiation with the the candidate.
Right.
Where we talk to them and we say, we're looking at a twelve month contract and they say, I really can't do twelve months, I'd like to do eighteen or twenty four or whatever it is. And then we have that conversation with the, we've done this several times on um step, on vacation, on a variety of different things. And then the Personnel Committee would vet it and then work with, and then when we come to the full board, make that recommendation.
But could we make, could we amend the motion that Beth made to say that in the event, it would, if recommended by the Personnel Committee, would not have to come back to the full board?
Well, we would have to still bring the hiring, if it's a contract, so the contract still has to be approved by the board, um, but. But as we've typically done, you know, with those sorts of things, we've had the discussion already, you know that the the hiring process has been um high quality and so, and we have a high quality person that we're recommending to bring forward and typically at that point.
And how will that contract work, is that they're fully vetted, that they're, they get benefits and everything or they're outsourced, so it's just that kind of contract?
Yes.
They're provisional staffing.
Provisual, so I would just depend on you to try to make that work and then if it doesn't, just let us know what's going on, we'll go from there, that's my motion.
Would it be worded as temporary or just? Twelve months, and would the twelve months begin the first of the year? When are you considering filling the current, would they all begin the first of the year?
No, they would all begin as, um, soon as they can give notice or whenever their first day can start. So we would work with them in negotiations on what their first day could be.
And I have no idea what the pool looks like, I don't know if you're getting people right out of, that are, can just come in, you know, I don't know, you know that.
We put in a requirement that you have to have at least one year of experience.
So that's.
With a lot of great before you can apply, so we're not vetting, um, you know, attorneys who are just getting their license.
I mean, maybe, maybe you'd be lucky enough for somebody that can drive here from where they are and they don't, I don't know, so, that's all, that's my motion, so.
Do I hear a second?
I said it.
Seconded, we have a motion and it has been seconded, any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. And I would like to hear how the motion is worded, could you do that for me, Corey?
Well, I'm certainly going to try.
I can't imagine I'd struggle with it. Might need a Google translator.
I may have to watch this meeting a number of times before I get it right, but I have in my notes too. Um, the motion is to approve a, the hire of a assistant county attorney under a one year contract to reevaluate the backlog at that time and to also allow the Personnel Committee to bring a final recommendation to the board regarding the hire.
Does that sound right?
I would say the term, regarding the term of the contract.
Yes, depending on the change.
Yes.
Consistent with the use of ARP funds.
Okay.
Thank you. Get the ARP in there.
Julie, if you'd like to make a note, Brandy extended this meeting by a whole hour and a half.
That's okay.
That's why, that's why, that's why I was grinning.
I'm gonna move over a little bit.
You can't see this steam through my hair, right?
I see it.
When she punches me, I just pass it down.
That's okay.
I think I kinda get ripped off in this field.
As further discussion, I do respect the tough decisions the board has to make and um.
Yep. Are you okay with that, those who've made the motion and we're, we're okay with the wording? Okay?
Sounds good.
If there is no further discussion, then we will take the vote. All those in favor of the twelve month um situation here with our, with our. Assistant county attorney, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Can we take one minute break to fill our coffee cup?
Certainly.
I just wanna say a hootle, that was a bleak conversation in public safety last week, I mean, there's nothing real pretty coming. Well, I'm talking about um expenses coming in that area.
You're gonna need a change of the political winds to the east and it's not gonna happen.
How many would you say at that meeting, at our conference?
Overall, I mean.
Two, three hundred?
Yeah, at least.
And I don't think there was one positive. Their county and how good a staff they had, how well staffed, I should say, in public safety, I mean, everybody was saying that.
I just, I don't watch them anymore.
Yeah, I was, I, I, I see, go ahead.
All right.
All right.
We're ready.
Shall we move forward after our little break, we'll reconvene. All right, our next point here is Andrew.
So uh since we're running late, I will be just very brief and kind of skim through the background. We had a fairly lengthy discussion about um building improvements back at the work session in May. Identified a number of existing issues that um occur here at the courthouse, primarily as well as law enforcement and a little bit over at Family Services. Uh, this has been a project that's been going on for a long time, back in twenty fifteen, the county hired WOLD architects and engineers to do a com, a concept study and space needs analysis. Uh, ultimately, the project was placed on hold because the the preferred option at the time was constructing a new facility, but the cost of that project um caused the county board to decide to place everything on hold. So uh in May, at our work session, we discussed a number of options. Um, and ultimately, the preferred option that came up was using our existing facilities and shuffling departments in order to maximize that space. So that includes um relocation of the land use department from level three to the Family Services Center in the old cafeteria. Uh, relocation of the county attorney's office from level two up to level four. Uh, expansion of the jail facility into level three. And then that would allow for construction of a dedicated elevator from the jail up to the courts on level five, which solves the main security issue here in in the courthouse. So following this meeting, uh, we worked to identify um and, or I'm sorry, architecture firms in the area uh who were reputable and develop a request for qualifications, proposals, ultimately sent to five firms and responses were due on August twelfth. We only received one response and that was from WOLD architects and engineers. Uh, we had an interdepartmental committee um review the proposal and qualifications and that group ultimately recommended moving forward with negotiating a contract, which we did. Um, their proposed not to exceed value is twenty seven thousand eight hundred dollars, that includes three thousand dollars for reimbursement for expenses. Uh, they, since they performed the initial concept study and they're intimately familiar with our facilities and the project as a whole. Uh, it's the main reason why we're recommending continuing to move forward with them. And uh ultimately, what we would do is um work with WOLD on their project schedule to um first and foremost, set up a kickoff meeting with the um courthouse security committee that was established, as well as the department heads from the affected departments. Uh, they'll work to um gather data and information, work with departments to uh verify the um space needs that they have. And then work to refine the the basic concept plan that we have, so there's some questions that are still out there. This room is one of those questions, does it remain here, does it go somewhere else, does it expand? Um, so that's what's, all, those are the sorts of things that are gonna get refined as we go through the study. The intent is by the end of this year or in um early January, the schedule got pushed just a little bit because we had um a technical issue on the contract. So end of this year, early January is when we should have our reports and have a a really good sense of what the um, the project is gonna look like and what we anticipate that it's gonna cost.
Not to interrupt you, but a lot of this has already been done.
Correct, yes, a lot of the work.
A lot of meetings previously about this, so most of it will just be a review except for a few additions, right?
Yeah, so one of the major things that needs to be refined is over here at the Family Services Center.
Right.
Eh figure out exactly how this is gonna be laid out and whether or not, you know, we had talked about expanding um the building a little bit to the west. Uh, this, because there's that gap in between the main building and the old cafeteria, do we fill that out to add some more space? That's, I think, primarily where the work is gonna have to be, but then there's also the the questions here at the courthouse. And one of those questions is, in order to value engineer the project, do we not do some of this work to to bring that cost down? Or do we face? do we not do some of this work to, to bring that cost down or do we phase it over time? So for example, we have the County Attorney's Office coming up here to Level Four and the Treasurer's Office moving down to Level Two. Well, in order to solve the security issue, um, that's not necessary. What's necessary is moving land use out of the building and expanding the jail in order to be able to install that elevator. What this does is it allows us to better use our space because as we see when we walk out of the room here, there's a kind of a lot of empty space here on Level Four and you go down to Level Two and it's fairly tight. And so that's kind of where that work is gonna come in is, you know, what exactly do we wanna do in, in these different areas? How do we wanna phase it? And then we should be able to, um, have answers on all of that, like I said, end of this year or in January.
And then when we look at, so, I'm sorry.
You heard a presentation from Elliot, that they're working really hard, um, to get the state to bond money for some of these jail openings because.
Uh, court, uh, court, courtroom, court room, security.
We're not doing that right now.
But it was, if I remember right, it's, it's a, it's a small number when you split it all.
Act issues is us, you know, coming through where families are.
So.
Anyway, they're in a big pool of nine.
Yeah, there, there, there is, um, courthouse security grant that is going to be made available. We've gotten some money in the past. We have other projects that are included in the two thousand and twenty-two budget.
Money we got in the past was, it was a few thousand.
Well, I know, that's, that's the point, it's, it's not significant dollars.
That's how this all started out. We were gonna get this grant and it wasn't significant at all.
And, and so.
But I think the decision to stay is that, how much of that are, we weren't even looking at courtrooms right now or anything?
No, we are not looking at courtrooms.
Or just looking at that other elevator and then have a holding room for the people so they don't, the perpetrator doesn't have to walk by the witness? That's, and we can only do that with one courtroom.
Exactly, because, you know, and the challenge is, in order to have the space in the jail to install that elevator to go directly up to Five, you have to do it in the visitation area, so you need a new visitation area and that's where we look to have to push out into Level Three.
And then the other question probably is, are we still looking at the same amount of people that need to be over at Social Service now with remote and stuff? Because that was something that hadn't been established.
Correct, so there's, there's a whole another, there's a whole another thing about Family Services building regarding social services and public health and how that is all laid out that's not included in this project. But talking with Paul, some of that work can be, some of that can be done by reorienting, um, reception uh, and, you know, merging reception and doing different things there. So, um, that piece of it is, is separate from this. But as we've talked about, this piece overall has a fairly high ticket value.
And they, you didn't get any other response, I didn't.
No, we did not, I know, I was surprised. I was, I, and I think part of the reason is because, you know, other firms look at it and they say, well, World's already done this work up to this point. We're not gonna be as, A, we're not gonna be as competitive financially and B, they already have a relationship. We think it's probably World's job anyway. I've, I've seen that on other projects.
Yeah.
Part of this, um, we have the Veteran's Service Office that are currently in the Social Services. Is that going to be brought over to this building?
That is not part of this project.
That's not, that hasn't been talked about.
No.
Just, you know, you showed us one rendering from World that took a ten thousand square foot building and brought it down to five. I hope they find another five when they do this.
I think part of the issue when we started all this, and I think Brandy, you were there initially too, we had a lot of different meetings to decide and ended up look. And now at least we know this is how we're gonna end up probably and so we can go with something.
And, and I think that's.
I don't have any idea on the price tag, but.
I think that's the, the key here is that all of the work that we've done up to this point gets us to where we are today, which is, we have a general idea of where we wanna go. Now we're gonna refine it and we'll make some decisions on.
Oh, we went from looking at used buildings to putting.
Oh, yeah.
It just went, we gotta get focused on a project and.
We went from a very global set of options to now we're down to a narrow set and that's good.
Madam Chair, I move to approve a contract with World Architects and Engineers for a concept study relating to the improvements at the courthouse and Family Services.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have the motion, it has been seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll take the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried.
Andrew, um, in the past, we always had a couple commissioners assigned to each building, kinda. Do we still have that or?
Back at the.
Me and.
I don't know who it is, but you and I are here.
Yep, we're, we're.
Okay.
I don't remember who was that.
I was, but I don't, I don't.
Well, I think I was on security and then the ground level of the courthouse, well, the whole project, but then the courthouse is mostly.
So I, I think that this is.
We're on what?
Highway building.
Oh, are we? I didn't know that.
Yeah, you're the lead.
Oh. Glad we're not doing anything to that one.
So, um, I, I think that kinda leads into potentially another item and it may not have to be for today's discussion. But, um, you know, we're affecting two buildings here. How we got to this point is with the courthouse security committee, which included Commissioners Elbergen Johnson. Do we, now this project is gonna, like I said, impact multiple buildings and it's gonna have some shifting pieces that some of it gets done here, some of it gets done there. Um, do we want to identify a couple of commissioners to, um, serve as the, the points for this project as a whole or how, how do we wanna go forward with that?
Well, I would like to be on this project because I've been on since the ground floor, so I would like to stay on it as long as I can. Cause I, when we started all this, so whether that be just overall or in courthouse and somebody else on the social service, that's the way we, we've done separate buildings, but then the overall picture Brian and I did. So, under reorg, so however you wanna do it.
I would be in favor of adding, I think the more eyes, the more ideas, the more things you see that you otherwise.
I mean, who's on social service building?
So I, I don't see on.
Well, me and Brian.
Yeah, I don't see on our list that we have.
Went to you and Brian, so maybe.
I don't see on our list that we have anyone appointed to Family Services. I see courthouse and grounds. And then I know we have the, the highway building because that's a joint prod, or that's a joint, um, committee with MINDOT.
Well.
But I might be admittedly missing.
I just didn't remember what we did at one shift.
Yep, I was on, I'm on courthouse.
Yes, so we, what, my concern is we run into a point of open meeting concerns and efficiency concerns. If we're having, you know, a meeting to talk about this thing and then the next day we have to have another meet or later in the, and we start to get to a point where World's time becomes.
Right.
Eaten up and, um, they may come to us looking for additional.
Beth and Steve or Beth and Danny or Beth and Julie on the social service building. I'll stay with this.
But that's, that's kind of what I'm getting at is we're gonna end up having meetings with World where we talk about the project as a whole. And so it's difficult to rotate people and, alright, we're gonna step away from the courthouse now. Now, you need to leave and we need to bring this other person.
So we probably just need two people on the overall project.
That's, that, and then we come back, we're gonna have a discussion as a full Board.
And I would like to be one of those people because I've been on from the beginning, so then we need one more and.
I'd, I'd like to be part of it too.
Okay, so we have our two representatives in?
As long as.
I'm okay.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Believe me, I don't. I'm good.
Yep.
I thought you were raising your, you were trying to hold your hand though.
No, no. I'm like this. No, no problem. Julie, it's, uh, you're really late.
Alright, the next item is, we've identified that December seventh, uh, we have a County Board meeting. It conflicts with the AMC Conference and I believe a couple, if not a few, few are, um, registered to attend that conference. And so we're looking at a di, other dates to schedule our County Board meeting. Um, one thought that I had was December ninth, which is the Thursday and would be the day after the AMC Conference is wrapped up.
I didn't get anything.
Most counties is on the second, or the first Tuesday.
It happens that way every year.
Every year.
Do they?
Yeah.
So six and seven are AMC Annual Conference.
Yes, and eighth as well.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm suggesting December ninth.
Who's going? And I'm not sure yet if I can, I'm try, I'm gonna try if I can.
Well, it might just good for me. I'd be fine if I had.
Julia, are you gonna go to the conference, you think?
I don't think so. I'm not planning.
When is the last date to sign up for the meeting, for the meetings? Do you know? You don't have to know.
Well, you can, you can, there's a price difference. So if you do the early bird registration for the meeting, you save like fifty bucks in the, in the price.
And then you cancel within, or you can't?
And I already booked rooms just in case, thank you.
How many rooms did you book?
I have three.
Okay.
But I can cancel those up to twenty-four hours prior.
Steve, you two are going for sure. I might. Danny, you think you are not? Look, you can't be bailing hay in December, don't get me that.
We're burning.
Even I know better than that.
Haircuts to bowls in December.
That makes a difference.
Yeah.
Eight thirty on December ninth.
Eight thirty on December ninth.
Everybody okay with that? So we move our regular County Commissioner meeting from Tuesday the seventh over to Thursday the ninth at eight thirty.
Do we at some point in time, this is just a question, do we review some of the committees, signs that we're on? Not to change the committee's.
Every year.
Say whether we wanna continue?
Does that happen in January?
December or do we wait till January?
Usually do it in January.
Where our colony isn't represented on that committee at all.
What do you mean?
This one, if we leave it.
Oh, yeah, we review. So if normally the way it's, and it can change is we change, I'll stay on this, I don't wanna do this. We've changed things around in the past of somebody, if there's been scheduling conflicts or whatever. The AMC ones, we've always just kinda left the same, but, um, we can change those up if we want. I've, I've, I've had a couple where I just couldn't do, so I had to move them with somebody else and exchange them. And then Huberty got me, um, on the shelter one and I didn't, he, he kinda did that. And I've been on there ever since, that's all I'm gonna say, but, cause he had a, he had a scheduling conflict. So that's when we talk about it.
Okay, cause I was, whoops, I'm sorry. I was just thinking there may be one that I'm on that maybe as a county, we don't need to participate in.
And those are discussions that we need to.
I gotta get, I don't.
Oh, when you came on, everything started in January.
Right, and we'll, that's when we do it, isn't it? January, first meeting in January, we go over there. Yep.
You start jockeying about now and, uh, for what you want and what you don't want.
Well, you know.
Try and get a take.
And here's the other thing, the longer you go on, on one, the longer you're on one, the, the more you stay because you learn more. So you get more responsibility and so it's hard to just change them up, if you know what I mean.
Yeah, I'd like public safety.
Yeah.
I'm just on one where it just seems like it's.
Public safety is actually.
And I'm saying, why are we not participating? We're not gonna be a part.
Like, public safety now, AMC is helping you with emergency services board. Cause emergency services is a complex acronym. But now being on AMC, then you need other players in the big picture and it starts to bring it all together.
This is like being on the prime west port, that is the king of acronyms.
You'll be learning that long after the, I mean, that's just, you just need good administration there and thankfully we have it.
Anything else, Andrew?
Uh, for my report, the only item is that we are gonna have a work session next week, so expect your agenda.
We aren't?
We are, we are.
What's it gonna be on?
We have, uh, three items. One of them, we're gonna discuss, um, AIS and so on water. We're also gonna have an informational session on, um, redistricting because that's gonna be coming up for us in the next several months.
Okay.
Uh, and a third item that is also out of the Auditor's Office that is escaping my mind at this moment.
Is what?
It's escaping my mind at this moment.
Okay.
What's that about?
I wonder what that's about?
I don't know yet.
That's a tease.
I don't remember.
One more thing to report.
Yep.
And I'm very pleased about that.
What is?
Your appointment.
Oh, not yet. Not officially yet.
What has he been appointed to?
Nothing officially yet.
I can't, we can't say no, he's just, he's just shut me down.
Big secrets.
It's another committee that Paul wants me on. Yes.
Be good.
I bet I know.
It's a strategic planning committee, yes.
Okay.
Okay, who wants to go first?
I will, I'll make it really short.
Oh, sure.
Because I was at a PAC meeting and they talked about substance abuse, um, I really felt uplifted. But then, uh, the AMC meeting, uh, I really did enjoy the AMC meeting. I am on transportation and infrastructure. Um, how many section corners are there in Minnesota? Section corners, now thank you, you're surveying. There are three hundred thousand. How many township corners are they in the state?
Why do I need to know this?
Hold a Fred?
I'm gonna use one of my lifeline.
Yeah.
It was, he, this surveyor got up and he was explaining that all of these old monuments that were put in, back close to nineteen hundred are, lots of them were put in a wood and they're rotted, but they still have to find them. And they had a guy down in Iowa, uh, they had to go and tell him that he, because they found the correct monuments, he resurveyed, that he no longer lived in Minnesota than I lived in Iowa.
That would be disappointing for anybody.
That'd be a big blow.
Well, the guy said, that's alright, those Minnesota weather, uh, winters are awful. Okay, um, they prioritized, uh, I am so thankful for Co-op Electric because I didn't have to sit and worry about fighting for broadband for our county because that got to be a super hot issue. And they were barking at the messenger and I felt bad for her because they really were after it. But, um, that ended up being the number one priority. Second priority is new revenue for roads, bridges and transit. Um, and the third one is the survey monumentation. They're gonna ask the state for funding so that they can start replacing these monuments. Uh, it was a great time in Alex. I met a lot of people. I heard a lot of different things. And it was, uh, sometimes you go to meetings and conferences and they're not with your money, they're not with your time. Uh, I have yet to be the one that AMC did not keep its agenda on time because they cut people off and you're done, we're moving. Um, so that's very nice because they move into the next speaker and you keep going, so.
They do a good job of that. I think as new commissioner, the first couple of years I went to, uh, everything. It gets a little repetitive. I mean, there's always new things, but for new commissioners, AMC, there's a lot of good information there.
And.
Well, even for me, I'm sure, but.
How did you call what we did when we were eating? Hog feeding?
Feeding at the trough. Stair stuffer.
Open their hats up after you're done.
Yep.
Bunch of guys walking around with their zipper open.
They had hot apple crisp.
This is odd, you know.
Yeah. I always know that's odd.
Danny, Steve went up to the table where it was, he took out one slice, put it on the plate and then took the pan back.
That sounds wonderful.
You don't, you, you sit in meetings all day and then they three, three meals.
Yes, and we were five and one in bean bags, only the numbers are turning around. One or five.
Do you want to go next as long as you were AMC or any?
Yeah, um, basically I had gravel tax on the ninth, me and Julie sat in on gravel tax and EDA I had that night too. And gravel tax, basically we went through the, everything we talked about with Bart today. Um, EDA, I came towards the tail end, I think Danny was about to say adjourn when I walked in the door. So he'll have to give a little update on that for the most part. Uh, we did have a class in comp with Paul on that family service position. The conference, yeah, I was on public safety, um, had really intense discussions. As I said earlier, it's, there's a lot of, well, I worry some things on the horizon and trends that are being established and identified that, uh, are gonna be not very. There's a lot of, well, I would worry some things on the horizon and trends that are being established and identified that are gonna be not very fun. Just because of laws. I mean, back on, one of the big things that happened that's been put on hold or judge went away from it was, all the border counties, our neighboring states have said they will, North Dakota, South Dakota, Iowa was gonna, they won't cross the border to help. Because if their officer comes in and there's an altercation or a problem, now they fall under Minnesota state law and border states have said, we're not coming. They won't cross the state line because we're not.
Cause of the use of force. Yeah, that started on last year, I think, didn't it, Brandy?
Yeah, and they froze that. So now we're back to just last week. So at the tail end.
Very heated discussion on that.
It's not a good time to be in that area, occupation.
So that's all I'll say about that. And that's about it.
Okay, I'll take you back off of that. Yes, I attended the gravel tax meeting that was on September ninth. I was here in the boardroom. Steve was on the committee with me. Barb conducted the meeting. There were several representatives present that night from township boards. Business included appointment of a chair, which Steve so graciously accepted the responsibility. He will be chair of that committee now.
He's got a pretty picture.
Where is that picture?
Committee members will receive their mileage. We discussed that earlier here today. It was decided each township rep and two commissioners will constitute voting membership. June 30th will become the due date for applications to the committee for review. The committee discussed a current application on how gravel tax dollars may be spent and heard a presentation about an environmental project. Steve, anything else? We, that was.
No, pretty much everything.
Chair Bredeis, did they talk about reimbursement for the attorney's time on those meetings? If you guys are all getting.
No.
Okay.
One map was there.
Correct.
But per diem for township members was discussed and valid. And I have a 1:30 meeting of extension of fairgrounds today and that, I think.
I don't think you're gonna make it.
Danny, are you?
How long is your update? Holy crap. I'll make mine real brief then, huh?
Oh, I left you wide open for that one.
Uh, Steve and I had class in comp. We took care of that with the social service employee that we hired. Had an EDA. We approved some more funding for more houses for number one. And we also talked about maybe putting a pot of money, 10,000 in for childcare. Waiting for that committee to kind of give us some ideas in terms of what we'd actually use the money for.
I think the jury's still out on that because I don't know if they know, do they, Andrew?
And what they're gonna use it for. Yeah, it's, I think they're narrowing down.
It's, uh, it's been a process.
They're narrowing down.
I kind of assume so. You're on that one too, aren't you?
Yeah.
You both are, aren't you?
Well, I, I couldn't make it and then nobody could.
They just talked about it. So there's no actual concrete on that one.
I think part of the issue, and I'm not, is they just need to know what their needs are.
Yeah.
So they can be addressed right, Andrew.
That's exactly right.
That's what the problem is.
One of the things, MMDC talked about it today was, there's a building, a large building, we've all had, it's been vacant. And we have some interest in it and it has a large, like extremely large, like 20,000 square feet of office space in the front. That's open, basically it was cubicles. And the company that's come in there said he would be interested in, in turning that into a daycare. And so there, he's looking at ways to, they said he doesn't.
But it's how to, it's how to best utilize the money though, you know?
So there's some good ideas up there.
Yeah.
I like those ones that are sustainable. Year after year it's there.
Yeah. So, and then I think I just had a IT meeting with Paul. They talked about app extender and then about printers and copiers and stuff in terms of, putting an inventory in terms of printers, in terms of their age, and then if we're gonna buy or these copiers, I don't know if they talked to you about that. I think you're in charge of that, but that's about it. I didn't understand anything else of it, so. I guess frowned and then sometimes, you know, depending who commented, it's like, no.
It happened every time I spoke.
That's my whole college. Time, one time I get the coors like, that's how I had.
So I had a couple. I had CHB finance meeting last week. And that was mostly to discuss about the, the public health grant. They increased it this year by a hundred some thousand dollars. And so we're gonna use some of it for some extra IT, IT costs, some different, I think IT was most of it and then some Zoom things we had to, and the rest of it is gonna go back to each county. So I think there was like 75,000 left. So we, Meker will get 31% of that for this year and then also it, next year it'll be more too. So we had, we, that was our main discussion there. I, I had an exec board meeting for the hospital. That was just kind of, I think Kurt was here last. We talked about a lot of that. The hospital is gonna have a rosier picture than they predicted after all the billing is in for the leases for the clinics and, cause Nicole always puts everything in high until she's figured it out. So that's gonna look a little better. The walk-in clinic has been busy. And I also had, what else did I, oh, and yesterday I had a personnel meeting for supporting hands and we just went over the budget and, they have a good budget. They're very well funded because they're an evidence-based program. And it might be an interesting program to have a presentation on sometime. Joe Flotten would be our, but Diane could probably set that up. And so we're talking about giving some money back to the county because our reserve is getting, and it's a discussion every year. The problem is there are TANF funds that pays for that, Andrew, and we think, we don't know if you can give that money back, you know, it's gotta be used for TANF. But everybody's in a different position and I said, here at public health, we're normally having to levy a little bit for public health so we could find a way to use it. So they're starting, probably gonna give back a couple hundred thousand this year and I, I don't know what amount that is necessarily for our county. But that's always a good thing. I don't like, it's always a discussion at a board. How much cash do you have to have on hand and what's fair to keep on hand when you're levying for? In this case, we're using TANF, but we're levying for other things, right? So. They're talking about, they, and they gave their increases, which was I believe two, two, 2% COLA and then I think they have a 2% step. They have public health nurses and that's getting to be a very competitive field. And just like the hospital, everybody's having to give more money because people are more mobile. Just like, like Brandy was saying, you can drive into Minneapolis and still live out here, you know, or drive up to St. Cloud or whatever. So. That's an issue every, everywhere. And that's all I had, I believe.
I did comment that the newspaper had a typo in the use of fund balance last week.
Did they?
The official paper, 1.3 million in use of fund balance, like.
Oh my gosh, who did that?
I ain't. For what?
I never looked at the papers.
I was reading that, I was like, whoa.
Did you correct it?
No, I didn't talk to anybody there, but it wasn't.
Who said that conference that I said, here, take a look at this, Steve?
Wow.
Did you see those numbers?
I'll demand a retraction.
I became home and read the actual paper just to make sure it was the same as like you showed me.
Re-request a correction. And we have the monthly fund balances. That was an attachment that's for our information. Any of the business that needs to come before us?
Make a motion to adjourn?
What's the center?
Does that count or after? Wait, I don't know.
I don't know that we have to.
Parliamentary procedure.
I want to thank everybody for your patience, for your preparedness, for your camaraderie. I know I don't rush things.
Saga.
Were you in the middle of something?
You're still in charge. You just keep talking.
Lock the door. I'm not done yet. I enjoy our meeting so thus, I am in no hurry to leave, put it that way. It's, it's well done and I appreciate you all very much. Meeting adjourned.
Yeah.
Okay.
See you in an hour, right?
Yep, I'll be there in an hour again.